Okay, welcome everybody to this work session mainly focused on our budget. The first thing we're going to do though is have a discussion about the presentation by the SORA group and talk about the next steps and what kind of process that we would need to go through legally especially. So we have our legal counsel here to sort of help us go through this process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem.
Good to be back with you. I've been laid up a little while, so I'm happy to be here. I did have an opportunity to speak to Bruce Poole about this proposal today. He helped to distill it for me after reading all the documentation into SORA's, I guess, desire to participate in the planning process for the redevelopment of Hagerstown or specified areas in Hagerstown identified by the councils, downtown, the East End, or any other areas that come into mind. He indicated to me that, I believe, SORA sees the initial phase of this as kind of a study. They solicit significant public input for several months, he indicated, and they put together some conceptual drawings and make recommendations for the redevelopment of the specific areas identifying both phases of development and priorities. He indicated to me that he sees this phase or this portion of the work as a $1 to $1.2 million project, that it would be a joint effort among SORA, City of Hagerstown, Washington County, and the State of Maryland. I know that at least a couple of members of the council and/or the mayor have indicated there might be some other players we might want to have involved as well. The question, I guess the first question that was posed to me was the procurement question. Can we spend $1.2 million or our share of a $1.2 million contract without the bid process so as to expedite this, given where we stand in the legislative session? The city's purchasing policy typically requires advertisement and bids for any procurement for materials and supplies depending on the amount, the dollar amount in question. Certainly, the dollar amount we're talking about here would require that. However, it's a little less strict or less clear maybe for professional or technical services. A bid process is typical, but there is more flexibility in the decision-making process there. There's also some language in the section that deals with professional and technical services that indicates, specifically indicates, a waiver of the bid process pursuant to a previous position, a previous section, and I'm going to talk about that one in just a minute. There are exceptions to our bid policy. One is a sole source exception. If there's only one vendor of a certain product, we don't have to put it out to bid. I don't think we have that situation here, although we may have a very small number of providers, qualified providers for this service. The other is an emergency situation where we actually can't get something out to bid, but that's sort of an imminent health, safety issue, and I don't necessarily see that in this situation. But the third, and the exception which I believe is applicable, is that the mayor or that the council can waive the bid requirement. And I think that is especially true in a professional or technical services contract based on a couple of subsections in that provision. But the waiver of competitive bidding has to go through a specific process. The mayor and council can waive the bidding and advertising process if they have determined, based on a submittal by the staff, that there is a justification to do so and a recommendation from staff to do so, setting forth a reason to waive the competitive bidding. And that waiver has to be approved by mayor and council in a public session. Additionally, the expenditure for an item in excess of $25,000 that's not previously budgeted also has to be approved in an open session.
Mark.
Sure.
I hear that, and I don't remember ever having any special sessions or approvals to hire bond counsel, to hire power counsel, or to hire any outside legal consultants. Never have we put out, to my knowledge, a bid seeking qualified bond counsel to get the lowest price, because there are a lot of qualified bond counsel out there, and there are a lot of qualified power people out there. Are you...
There is more flexibility in the professional services and technical services aspect of this.
Right, but we've never had public meetings about waiving the requirement to bid them. Are you saying we should be?
Well, I think implicit, I think sitting, whether it's a closed or open session, I think if you make a decision not to go through a straight-out bid process, I think it's implicit in the approval of the contract that it's, the bid process has been waived. But I just, you know, one, because of the high profile of this, this project, I think, I think we will definitely go through that vote. That would be my recommendation. The problem arises, it's a high hurdle to get over, and you'll have to consider whether there are factors that will make you comfortable doing that. Second, the, but the problem that I see potentially with doing that is if we're looking for partnership on the dollars from the state and the county, if we don't go through a competitive bid process, what have we done? Have we complied with their procurement policies? And I, you know, in the short time, in the short turnaround I've had to do this, I don't know the answer to those questions. So if we agree to proceed without bid, will the county agree that that's appropriate? Will the state agree that that's appropriate? So I don't think we're in a position to make that call yet. I think we're going to have to, the next part of this basically is the next steps in the process. I think the first next step is identify who we want the players to be, and the second will be, how can, how can they expedite their procurement policy?
Mark, you keep talking about the bid process. What about an RFP process, or are you using those terms interchangeably?
That's, that's... I am, I am.
Because we certainly have the authority for professional services not to pick the lowest bidder because its quality is so important. Now, I'm not saying, I'm not commenting on this particular proposal, but I'm just saying because, you know, I believe that in a case like this, an RFP process is appropriate, but...
Yeah, I sort of am using those interchangeably.
But you're using those interchangeably.
Correct.
As long as people understand that clearly in this type of thing, it's not necessarily the lowest bid. It's the, you know, the judgment of the value you're getting.
And that is pointed out.
The ability to deliver the service in your particular situation.
Right, and that's pointed out explicitly in our professional and technical services section.
Any other questions from the council? I don't have questions. I think I'm on. But I think since their presentation, you know, there's been a number of public comments made, and there's certainly been, you know, some editorials produced and some positions of public opinion, and I think that your question of, you know, sort of who's at the table, I think is paramount at this, for this, because, you know, as much as sort of the individual approach toward the stadium proposal, what was largely and, you know, more singularly, a city direction, you know, in terms of carrying it out, to me and what was presented simply isn't. And, you know, I, and there's been, you know, any number of sort of partners thrown around here. So for me, you know, in Mr. Hanlon's editorial, I think today, I don't agree with some things, and it pointed out a couple of items such as, you know, there is clearly talk going on right now of the Board of Education looking for, you know, a possibility of relocation. Clearly, you know, we've been discussing a stadium proposal, you know, we've been talking about East End and tearing down MELP, and so for me, this isn't just ours, so to speak. So for me, you know, your elected bodies need to be sort of equal partners at that table right from the outset, in that being the Board of Ed, the city, the Board of County Commissioners, and the delegation as sort of four, you know, sort of equal partners in this process to say, hey, we recognize that we need some reinvestments, some redevelopment, and, you know, some, some sustainable direction for the urban core and its surrounding neighborhoods. So, so for me, I think that those four parties sort of have to be brought together, you know, right away. And I think that gets us into this question I raised last Tuesday of, you know, how do you do that when you sort of see an entity sitting in front of you that has that level of capital, that level of project experience, and that level of political connection frankly, assembled, you know, in one place, as one group, and coming to a local government, you know, with, with that proposal? And, and not to get too far sort of ahead of myself in the thought process, but then I think that if you can get those sort of four entities on, you know, rather equal footing right from the outset in the process and some agreement, you know, then, then you identify those community partners that clearly have a vested interest, because as much as the editorial, I think it was a week and a half ago, that sort of painted that this proposal was sort of all the stars aligning, you know, we don't control the Board of Ed, nor do we control Chief, or the efforts of Greater Hagerstown, or the Chamber, or all these other groups that clearly play, you know, some partnership role in it. And so, you know, if you could get those four elected bodies, if you will, on a similar path in, in the process, you know, then you would tie in your folks from the university and Meritas and the Chamber and EDC and Chief and, you know, the Suns and those other groups that come to the table and sort of say, you know, here's what we're planning to do, you know, is there one umbrella of a plan that we can accomplish it under? And is this, is this the group to facilitate that, that project or group of projects through? So I think though that that sort of begs the next question of, how do we get through the process of timing? You know, because everybody's sort of looking at this session as, you know, we need to get, you know, something to the state that says, here's the level of interest we have, here's the parties that we'd like to bring together, you know, and here's the funding plan for, for a plan that we'd like to, to approach. And I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's general consensus of this group, that that's sort of the entity that we'd like to do it with, but we need to make sure that there's a fairness, you know, afforded to, to all entities, as we said at that, you know, their presentation that evening, and do so in an expedient timeframe. That's just what I, what I envision sort of the, the steps or the next steps in, you know, in this hurdle to, to address.
My interest would be, as I said after their presentation, is a lot more detail on an enormous amount of money for soft planning costs, a lot more detail about what they bring to the table, truly what they bring, not in general terms. Are they really bringing capital, or are they intending to be rainmakers? And if so, who are they going to be rain, you know? I've talked to them, and, you know, I'm trying to work out answers, but that's me. It needs to be something we can all get our hands around, and there just needs to be an awful lot more work done before we can justify spending $50,000, much less a million in terms of understanding this proposal and the mechanics of it.
I think we all want to know if we're going to spend a million dollars, what we're going to get for that million dollars. And I've asked the SORA group...
It has to go way beyond that PowerPoint.
...present some kind of detail about what we would get for that kind of money. I do agree with Mr. Alshier that I think it's important that we bring all those different elected bodies together. I will say that I've reached out to the Board of Education, asked them for a joint meeting sometime in the near future. I think we should also do the same with the Board of County Commissioners, and I know some of us will be traveling to Annapolis tomorrow to be meeting with our delegation and other people in the state government administration. Mr. Metzner, you look like you want to say something.
Yeah, I think Kristin is absolutely correct. However, I would think that perhaps a good way to start this, and Martin is correct, but I think that one of the major funding partners we're really looking to is the county. And I think they're the people that we need to sit down with, with SORA immediately. While the board's important, the money comes from the county.
Correct.
As it relates to having this joint meeting involving the delegation with sessions starting right now, I can envision how difficult that may be to get all that coordinated, plus the fact, I think if we go to the delegation and/or the state with the county and city already in agreement, instead of making them a player to begin with of, having a third party say, yeah, we're good with this. I also would be, the money we're looking for the state for MELP, absolutely everything we can do to get it. But I think we should be very careful about being overly concerned that we need to have something to the state this session for their contribution to planning money. I think that's a mistake. And Don, you can help me and tell me if I'm wrong, but the word I have, if we get them in right at the outset with planning, then all the type of issues we're talking about, about procurement, about jumping through this hurdle and going through this hurdle, are going to be demanded of us right from the inception. And we're not going to have the freedom to be a city government and a county government locally working together, but potentially have the constraints of state policies and the planning phase. And a very good place to find out what SORA has to say about money is when they talk about the amount of money for the planning, how much are they willing to put up to partner? I mean, that's an immediate question. If the answer is nothing, which I would not anticipate, that, that says a lot. If the answer is a relatively substantial portion, that says a lot. But I think it's extremely important that we get together with the county on this issue as fast as we can. If everybody wants to put out RFPs, I don't have a problem with that because I really don't think we're going to get a response.
By the way, I think it was at the last meeting or the meeting prior to that, I said if anybody else has a good idea, call my office.
Yeah, I mean, this has been sitting around for...
And just for the record, I haven't received any phone calls.
No, and I don't even know who on something like this, where do you put the RFP out? I mean, who do you ask to come in with a package like we had presented? To me, it's unique. The players are unique. It's almost like real estate. However, if the consensus is that we put an RFP out, then I say we put one out and ask for a response within 30 days, max. At least a response has to interest. I mean, if you get nobody or some players that we could clearly identify as, that don't fit the mold, I don't think we need it, but I would not be opposed to it, but I would not like to see it slow things up immensely. But most importantly, I, I don't think we should think that we have to get all this done and have some package to the state within the next two months. I'm afraid if we do that, haste makes waste. I'd rather have a proposal, I'd rather see the county, the city split this initial planning phase with SORA, and then come to the state with a very tight proposal for the next legislative session. And the reason we need to meet with the county desperately quickly and today at our budget retreat, I mean, the past council and commissioners voted for $400,000 a year for 20 years for downtown redevelopment. It wasn't for a stadium, it was for downtown redevelopment. I personally would like to make sure that the county finds what we're doing here is considered, in their opinion, this downtown redevelopment, and if so, I think it's time that we stop talking about it, and in the next budget, we put $400,000 of city money and the $400,000 that we would pay to the county to go into a specified fund to do this. There is an $800,000 start to look at SORA and say, what's your contribution? And then we have something together to go to the state with, hopefully at the next legislative session, with a really positive packet with everybody behind it, instead of right now scrambling around trying to get our delegation involved in saying they think this is a good or bad idea. I just think we're going to spin wheels if we do that.
I appreciate your comment.
But the commissioners, yes.
I agree, and we will make that communication after this meeting. We will try, reach out to the county and try to get a joint meeting set up with them as soon as possible. I think that's a good idea. Let me ask all of you this. Straw poll. Do you think that a stadium or a multi-use facility is an important part of a redevelopment, overall redevelopment plan? In other words, do you believe that it could be a catalyst project? I'd like to hear your opinion on that. Start with anybody, chime in.
I'll be honest with you, so I don't know what else wants to go. I mean, I already voted that way. I already voted that way. I voted for downtown stadium for one reason and only one reason. It is known as downtown redevelopment. And that is why, if the majority of this council doesn't believe that that's an appropriate place for a stadium, my answer is I still support the money going to downtown redevelopment. I don't think that we can afford to spend money on a brand-new versus refurbished municipal stadium and devote the kind of funds that we're being asked to devote to the downtown redevelopment project. That's my concern, and I do think it could be a great centerpiece. I would like to think that if we really could come through with the type of project SORA's talking about downtown, that it's perhaps when everybody saw a global project that included a stadium as a part of the project, instead of the stadium being the project. And that was one of the things everybody kept saying to us in the last administration, the price keeps going up. And the reason the price kept going up is the price of the stadium didn't. But we came to a realization that taking a stadium and just plopping it right down where we wanted to put it and doing nothing else downtown was a failure to begin with. And therefore, we started talking in the tens of millions of dollars towards redevelopment of the area. So I think a stadium could be an integral part, but if it's not going to be, I totally think there's a whole lot of other things that can be done downtown along with redoing municipal stadium to the extent that the team would play there.
I think it's, if it's downtown, it can be a catalyst if it's done correctly, done right, linked into downtown sufficiently, marketed correctly and all that. I don't think it would be a catalyst at the, in the East End area. I just don't think people, it's hard enough to persuade people to walk, you know, across Antietam Street or across Baltimore Street, or, I mean, across Antietam Street or across Washington Street. And I think that it's not an essential piece. You certainly can't have downtown redevelopment without it. Question is, you know, how far do we spread our resources and where do we focus? I think the East End could, you know, I've always thought the stadium site, the existing stadium site would be a good light business park or a light industrial park or something of that nature that was actually taxpaying, you know? And, but refrain from putting it into the figures because I know how hard it is to get public property converted into something like that. So it wasn't even included in the stadium cost, it would be a deduct from stadium cost. But, so, I don't think it's absolutely essential, but I think only in downtown would it be that kind of catalyst. That would be my view.
I think there's an opportunity to do downtown and a stadium, and I'd like to hear what SORA has to say about that. I think the stadium project is absolutely essential, that it sort of needs to be an independent project and that it needs to move faster, because whether or not the Suns remain depends on getting it done, as we all know. So would it act as a catalyst for the downtown? I don't know, but it certainly needs to be a part of it.
All right, I'm looking at, because Kristin's going to wait until I get done. What I'm looking at, we're talking redevelopment...
You always lead Kristen Penny.
Pardon me?
You always lead Kristen around.
No, I don't. We're looking at redevelopment, and I'm not focusing on the downtown. I'm focusing on just exactly what SORA did say. They're branching out. And why can't we have a catalyst that's also in the East End of town? We have all of this to draw from, and why not? Okay? As I said before, we have the Maryland Theater. That should be a very important venue down here, and it still is not where it should be. And to do the whole redevelopment thing, the theme is, I feel, to include all of what is around and extend it out, and to make that East End of town something that is also great. And I think that it can be pulled from. Now, as far as going forward with a stadium, okay, right off the bat, I don't know. I'm not opposed to keeping the Suns here. God knows, we're trying to do that, but I don't know if they're going to work with that. And again, if they want to see, and if it should be the Suns, then if they are expecting great things, then they have to pony up too. And that's the way I look at it. It should be there. So, you know, I just hope that we don't prolong all of this, and we're into a year worth of, this is where we're setting again and not getting anything done. So, you know, the county, I don't understand, because I know that Kristin probably has heard from, and knowing that there are commissioners that do see and hear what's going on at council. And certainly, this has been discussed, and certainly, the county has been discussed here, and they know that. And what we haven't heard, I haven't heard, is anybody saying, oh gee, from the county, that's really a good idea. So I don't know. That's not, I don't know if Kristin's heard anything from anybody or not on that line, but certainly, I would have thought that I would have heard something, and I haven't. So I don't know where the county's going to be with it.
Well, then, I think that's a...
May I respond to that?
A good reason to have a joint meeting with them, have this discussion openly with them. Go ahead, Mr. Metzner.
Yes, and I think you make a really good point. I have talked to some commissioners, and what they know about it is what they read in a paper. And frankly, the ones I've talked about or talked to about it have been fairly positive. They liked more details, obviously, and hence the need for the meeting. But I do think that there is that possibility, and I think it's a fairly strong possibility that we're going to get a good reception from the county, because they understand that if we build our tax base, that builds their tax base too. They like that.
I agree with Don. A number of commissioners have expressed that to me.
Well, that's good. See? That's good. I mean, I'm, you know, I set aside...
They've expressed interest and so forth, and mainly in a positive sense. As Don says, obviously, they need to know more, but it's been...
Yeah.
Let's, let's look at that. That sounds exciting.
Well, that's a good thing.
So I agree with Don.
Mr. Alshier.
Okay, Kristen. We know, everybody be prepared, Kristen's going to speak.
Well, it's the same thing I've said 30 times now. I think that downtown has clearly positioned itself as the catalyst for educational opportunities, for the expansion of educational opportunities. I think that's the appropriate place for it, just as appropriately as I think that the East End, the East End of our downtown, the East End of, you know, of our, of our inner core clearly presents itself with a much better position of having physical space to expand and rebuild around a, you know, something larger like, like a stadium venue. You know, I think that you look at the issues of sheer landmass, of, you know, your street system, accessibility, you know, your natural features, and I think that the East End, from the hospital site down, just lends itself more toward, more toward an open space recreation, you know, type setting than your downtown. And I think downtown, like it or not, for the last decade or so, we've invested in educational facilities downtown, and I don't see any reason to veer from that course with the Board of Education or expansion of ISFA or, or the university expansion and those other opportunities in the A and E district and our cultural and our governmental facilities downtown. opportunities in the A&amp;E District and our cultural and our governmental facilities downtown, you know, that would clearly be a long-term, sustainable benefit toward a great number of buildings that we have down here that, you know, that could benefit from that. So for me, I don't see the projects as mutually exclusive. As you've said, I, you know, I don't see where you can't do one over the other, but at the end of the day, I think in order to accomplish this, the avenue in my mind remains that you have your elected bodies sort of agree that this is the roadmap that you're going to go on. You bring these partners to the table that determine sort of a group of projects, larger projects, that, you know, that they feel are, you know, are their, you know, next steps in development, whether it be the hospital or the university or, you know, or the Board of Ed and the Suns, frankly. And you bring that group's sort of list of ideas back, and you vet those through your elected bodies, and you get the elected bodies to mutually agree on those numbers of them because if there's not political will among the bodies to do that, then there just isn't going to be the ability to share resources to accomplish them. And that's why I sort of envision, you know, the elected bodies being, you know, the umbrella and these partners being the entities that sort of say, here's the list of projects, you know, which ones, you know, are politically, are affordably feasible, that fit in with our plans, you know, and a group like Sora, and again, it doesn't have to be them, but a group that is uniquely fitted like that can take those and say, you know, we're not the Suns, we're not, you know, we're not building, you know, the stadium, we're not the entity that's going to own the team, et cetera, but we are going to be the investment opportunity that allows that project, that catalyst, to thrive, no different than it would be for any one of these other projects.
And if I could, I think that what's being said is correct, but there's one glitch with it. And while the projects are not mutually exclusive, what Mr. Munson said was very accurate, which I think we need to go to the Suns and ask them, will they be a partner in this project? And the reason I say that, I got a lot of geez, you changed and suddenly you're anti-Suns and you're ready to get, and that's not true. What's true is that Bruce Quinn sat here and said he has to have a commitment from us by April 1 of this year of where this team and this stadium is going to be and playing by April 14. And I think we have six more work sessions between now and the 1st of April. And I'm just trying to be realistic. Unless somebody at this table is going to tell me that we're going to agree on a location and financing of a new Class A stadium by the 1st of April of this year, then we need to go back to the Suns because I didn't mean to throw them out, but I take them at their word when they publicly say they need these things under these time constraints. I think we need to also go to them and say, listen, we're talking about bigger than what we talked about just for the stadium. Are you guys in on this? You want to play with us? Because we all want them here. I want them here. The difference, if I had the choice between Class A affiliated team or an independent league team, there is absolutely no doubt in my mind that I would prefer Class A affiliated baseball here. The question is, how do we independently go forward with a stadium and the funding while at the same time spending the time we need to spend on the total redevelopment package? And I don't think you can go to everybody twice. You've got to go to everybody with one big package. And I think we need to bring the Suns in and say, we're serious. You know, you've got a new administration that within four weeks of being sworn in is talking about serious redevelopment of our community. There is no question, East End and downtown, and every one of us would like in some manner to be able to financially be able to do it. So we got all the things we're talking about done, but money, as we're going to find out very soon, is always the issue.
Well, I think that the Suns ought to, they also ought to be realistic in the fact that this is a big endeavor for the city, all right? The big focus was that stadium, but you know what? Now, let's sit back and think, is this going to benefit the Suns, okay, to Quinn? Because you know what? It's going to take longer than this season in order for all of this to happen. So in setting down, this is what the option is here. We look at a full redevelopment plan. If you can't go with that, then we're going to have to look elsewhere, and that's it. I mean, they've always been, he's been the elephant sitting at the end of that table stating what he was going to do. So, okay, now, is it worth it staying here? That's the way I look at it.
Well, let me say this, because I do think when Mr. Quinn came in front of us and made that presentation, I think that he is a willing partner to negotiate with us in good faith. And I think everybody's paying attention to what we've been doing here for the last two months.
Correct.
And, you know, I'm an impatient person. I want this to happen as fast as possible.
I know. So am I, but.
So I think I'm going to do everything I can to keep the ball moving forward towards any kind of resolution. I can report that the staff has been asked to bring the Ripken Group back in, to have other locations looked at. I know this is going to be difficult, but I want to ask one more question and then wrap this conversation up so that we can talk about our budget. But one of the things that I know that is our biggest job is that we've got to find a way to increase revenue without raising taxes. And it may be part of our discussion here tonight about taxes is going to be a big part of this discussion. And the way we do that is to increase property values. And how do we do that? I mean, that's the whole goal behind this redevelopment master planning effort. So the question I want to put to all of you is whether or not, and this is a yes or no answer, please, whether or not you believe the old hospital site, the location of the actual hospital itself, is located in the downtown? And before you answer, let me give you the reason why I ask, because as many people as there are in the room, if you ask them where downtown begins and ends, you will get as many different answers. And I've been asking this question of everybody that I come across, and there is no real, you know, it depends on what your interests are. It depends on where you live, perhaps. So I'm just curious amongst us here and on the council here, yes or no, do you think the old hospital site is in downtown?
No.
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 Yeah.
I don't. However, it's close.
It's close, okay.
It's close, yeah.
Close enough that if the right attractions were downtown.
And I have a lot of follow-up comments, but I
That's right. We have to go.
Say that for another time.
No.
But that was pretty good in terms of everybody, almost everybody giving a one-word answer. That was, that was pretty good. I appreciate that. I just wanted to throw that out there because I think those two things, where does downtown begin and end as part of our whole master redevelopment planning effort is going to be important. And because, keep in mind, when I talk about a redevelopment process, I'm looking at, as I think all of us are, more than just downtown. We have, we need to connect all of
We agree.
All parts of our city to the downtown, all roads and
Right. By the way, my guess is if you ask all the restaurants and businesses downtown whether they noticed the loss of business when the hospital moved, they would tell you no. And I think that's a good way to determine whether or not, at least then, what you're saying, Mayor, is you want to make that part of downtown by the connections.
Well, I think we, I think that I hope that the hospital site is seriously considered for a stadium because I think it's a perfect in-between location. I know that there's some geotechnical issues that need to be looked at, but I think in terms of being on top of the hill as opposed to being at the bottom of it, being four blocks away from where the proposed project was last year, I think that just, it needs to be a site that is considered. But I, you know, I think, so where does downtown begin and end? And also, how do we increase tax revenue without increasing taxes? I think those are our two key challenges. But if anyone has any other comments about the Sora project or any questions specifically for our legal counsel, why don't we go ahead and do that?
In your opinion, the, well, I think it's safe to say that the public expects us to move, to move as quickly as prudent. So if we, if we have the different methods that you've pointed out, what's the timeframe difference? Can you estimate that?
Well, I think we're probably talking about 60 days to advertise, solicit bids, put out an RFP, and then receive them in and go through a selection process, which is different than just bottom line, what's your price, which is also based on your experience and expertise. So I think we're probably talking about 60 days. Thank you.
Mark, you start out by saying in your conversation with Bruce Poole, he said the first phase is planning. Did you guys get into any subsequent phases or did you just focus on the first phase?
Well, ultimately, then, the subsequent phases would be to, as part of the first phase, would be the timing and scheduling of the recommendations, which may very well include private investment and public investment and infrastructure and other facilities. The other phase is going to be construction. I know that Sora or its affiliate has interest in that as well. That phase, once we're into construction, I think we're going to definitely need to go with an RFP. I don't think there's any way around that.
Well, thank you for bringing that information to us and stand by.
I will.
And Mayor, while we're on this topic, real quick, just to clarify, so for next week, we'll bring back kind of a general discussion on Ripken looking at alternative sites. That's the request, right? In terms of impact and what they did for the downtown site. So we'll have that on for next week's work session.
Mayor, could I make a comment?
Please.
The question you asked about where is downtown is a very interesting and good question, and I guess it depends on precisely where you stand, but, not you personally, but where everybody stands. But you know, if in fact that stadium were on the old hospital site, if that turns out to be what the council wants, I mean, there's no question that when the crowd leaves the stadium, they're close enough to downtown that they would not hesitate to go to Bulls and Bears, a German restaurant, or any other restaurant in downtown. There just has to be the right attractions in the core to encourage those people to come.
I beg to differ. I think there is a question, and I think it's significantly farther from what people in this day and age are willing to go. Under the prior stadium proposal, they would walk up one long block to walk the whole way from that area. So once they get in their cars, we've lost them, in my opinion. They're not going to get in their car and drive downtown.
They didn't want it was a municipal stadium. They did not do it when it was
Right. They're not driving from Municipal Stadium. I mean, I just, you know, I simply disagree. I mean, you know, everybody's entitled to their own opinion, but I would professionally disagree with that. I also think that one of our problems downtown is it's an old, it used to be the second-largest city in Maryland. It's almost too big. We already have too many blocks of commercial and buildings, too much, to redevelop. There's not the market for it. We've been focusing on a few blocks. That leaves other blocks out. But it's very difficult, and it's going to remain difficult unless our area becomes a major part of the metropolitan area, it's going to be very difficult to revive the whole, all the areas of commercial downtown that's already identified as downtown in the zoning ordinance and so forth. And by the way, the hospital is not in that area. So to expand the area and add more areas of retail and service is like spreading the problem. That's my judgment on that matter. I think we need to focus more tightly, not spread out further.
Can I just make this comment?
Please.
As before, when all of this whole stadium deal was coming up, everybody focused on, oh gee, if the stadium's down there, if those people are just going to come out of that stadium and go to these restaurants to eat. By the time you get done going to a stadium, and if you take children to a stadium, you've already put how much money into, okay, providing for those children and yourself as far as eating there. The chances are, no, you're not going to come out, and especially if it's an evening game, to go. Now, whether or not you're going to come in and you're going to say, oh gee, I'm going to come in town and I'm going to eat here first, and then I'm not going to indulge in the stadium. Not good either. So I just, you know.
Well, I think a lot of it depends on
I don't see that unless it's a day, a day event, all right? And then by day event, perhaps. But I've heard too many people say, you know, I go to the game, I eat at the game, and then I get in the car and I go home.
I think a lot of it depends on how events are cross-marketed, how easy we make it for people to possibly get on a public transportation, perhaps a downtown circulator, something because there's a study that says people, after they have to walk 1,500 feet, they're going to look for alternate modes of transportation.
That's what I'm talking about.
So we have to look at the kinds of transportation options that we provide people, those cross-marketing efforts. So I think there's a lot of it going into this, and certainly, this is a complicated issue. We could probably spend the next two hours talking about just this.
We could.
But I want to move the discussion along at this time to the budget, which is really the reason why we scheduled this work session to begin with. But all of this, I think, is related, and I think it's good to have this discussion. Thank you, Mr. Boy. So I'm going to turn it over to staff now to lead us through this budget retreat.
Okay. While the two Michelles are coming forward, Mike Spiker, you want to take a minute? You've got some staff here. You wanted to just introduce your staff, maybe some faces that aren't real familiar with the mayor and council. Some are, but if you
I know each others. Are you solely financial? I'm also the business of Southern West, our operations manager.
We all knew Nancy Hosrath, our operations manager. Bill Fockler is beside of me. He's our utilities facilities manager. And of course, Nathan Friday here, our electric operations manager. We're missing two. They couldn't be here tonight, but the rest of us are here.
John Listition, you've got Stacy.
I guess Jonathan Kearns is here and Stacy Garenleth is here. She's our new finance specialist in community and economic.
And then George Kearns is sitting over on our right. He's in Public Works and he's president of our local ASME union. So I think you know and have seen everybody else. And so we'll kick things off. Have we got a chair for Kathy? Good to bring her up as well because she's going to help. So can we slide one over? And we've got extra sets of the budget retreat handout material that Donna has, so if anybody missed it, feel free to grab a packet there.
Do you remember how far?
So while we're getting started, if I could just make some general introductory comments, and then we'll pass this over to Kathy and then two Michelles and I'll cover some of the other issues.
Is the hospital site in the downtown?
This is intended to be this afternoon, just an initial overview of the preliminary budget information. Under our city code, we'll present mayor and council a comprehensive proposed budget by the end of March, March 31st or sooner. And you'll have the opportunity then to work on it for two months, amend it, revise it as you see fit, and then adopt it by the end of May. So what we have today is very preliminary. It's not even got the detail that we'll have for you when we get the proposed budget in place. And, but what we've got is a combination of financial information that I think will be very useful for you, as well as some community-based information. The reason for the community information is so much of our budget is dependent on the community in terms of resources, how much we draw on the community for our resources, as well as the demands and services, the demands placed on our services by the community and our projects for the community. So Kathy will cover some of the community information for us. We're not seeking any final decisions from the mayor and council tonight or any formal decisions. We're not really prepared to say this is final information for you. But I think it's helpful at this stage of the process, and staff will be working on this for the next two months to get it in shape for you. But I think it's helpful to give the mayor and council a nice forecast or snapshot of what lies ahead. And then let me just say in terms of where we stand, just briefly, in terms of the budget condition. One year ago, we talked about after several years of really having to cut our expenditures because of loss of revenue, we talked about as we were preparing this year's budget that we were in a stable condition. Property tax revenue had started to stabilize after the first year of the triennial. Property tax revenue had started to stabilize after the first year of the triennial. We weren't experiencing the loss of state and county revenue in the current year. It carried forward, but it wasn't new losses, and we'd made adjustments on our expenditure side. So, we were anticipating last year, as we look forward to this year, that we would start to experience more challenges, because our hope a year ago and our hope today is that we can start to plug in a cost of living adjustment for our employees in the 1314 budget. They've gone four years without a cost of living adjustment. They've gone three years without step increases. We think it's time to start funding a step in, or I'm sorry, a COLA at least, or some kind of contingency for wage adjustments for our employees in the next year's budget. And so we've tried to allow for that. So that's creating more of a challenge, because our revenues are still flat. They're not recovering from the economic recession. That's not a surprise for us. We knew it would take time. We're dependent on the property tax. About 70% of general fund revenues comes from the property tax. So we remain very dependent on that. In addition, and you'll hear later, we've got some challenges with corporate personal property tax. We hadn't anticipated the decline or drop in corporate personal property tax as a result of the recession and business activity that we started to experience last year, and we're experiencing this year, and we expect to carry forward into next year. So I guess one of the messages we'd like to offer is that while we're expecting some challenges for the coming year's budget, a year ago when we were working on our budget, we think the challenges have grown for us. Not insurmountable. It's not an unmanageable situation, but the challenges have grown. I'd also like to say that the numbers you're going to see today, as we look at next year's budget, the staff have already trimmed 1.7 million from the departmental submissions, either by cuts or by shifting projects within the capital improvement program. So we're continuing to hit our expenditures very hard, and that's after several years of hitting our expenditures very hard. And then, I would just offer two more thoughts. One is, I think it's very important that we look at this budget for next year, not just in the context of one year, but we need to look at it at least in terms of two years, and we tried to do that last year. The reason being is that our triennial reassessment for city properties will take effect in December of 2013. So the coming year's budget is the third and final year of the current triennial. In the first year of the current triennial, we experienced a significant drop in property tax revenue as new assessments came out. And you saw about a month ago, reports on the assessments for properties outside of Hagerstown, in the eastern area of Washington County, Funkstown, Smithburg, Boomsborough, where they experienced a pretty significant drop in the residential assessed values for those areas of the county. We're trying to work that into our projections for FY 1415, so the budget after next year's, that will probably experience a drop in our real estate values for residential properties, which translates into a drop in our revenue in what I would call the budget year, year after next. We have to keep an eye on that as we think about next year's budget. So that's a quick snapshot. If we could, I'll pass the baton over to Kathy, and she's done a nice job, I think, of preparing some community information. And if we can, we'll just take a quick pass through this information to give you some context for community resources, as well as our relationship of our budget to the community.
All right. Good afternoon. What you have here in the PowerPoint that I've attached is a snapshot from 2010 and 2011 of demographic data about Hagerstown, also comparing us to some of the other communities nearby, just to give a sense of how we are faring in our own region. And then it's a snapshot from last year of the development activity that was occurring in the city, since that is an important factor, because it plays into trying to increase the property values and the property tax revenue that we collect. So firstly, looking at the 2011 American Community Survey three-year estimates, that's what these 2011 data is, is from the census, but it's from the long forms that people filled out. The population was 39,662, and the median age of our residents was 35 and a half. The median household income was 36,806, while the counties was 52,653. A little later on in the information, you'll see family income, and that's a higher number, because the median household incomes includes a lot of single-person households, so that number is usually always a lot lower than the family income, because in the median household, the median family income would not include the single household information. More than one in five of our residents, this is not a very good statistic, were living below the poverty level. Two census tracts that include the inner west end and the area covering the Johnson Street neighborhood, the west city center, and the north part of South Prospect Street had nearly 50% of their residents living below poverty. The county rate was half of our citywide rate at 11.6%. 11.3% of our residents were unemployed. Again, those same two census tracts that had the very low high poverty levels had 18 to 30% of their residents unemployed. And that's the residents who were in that employment range, too. It's not counting five-year-olds and seven-year-olds. It's the people that the census figures as the employment range. 18 to 30% of them were unemployed in those two census tracts. The county rate was 9.7%.
But that doesn't apply to page two's poverty level, right?
Right.
Okay.
And then I looked up on the state website to see what 2012's unemployment information was, and we've had some improvement. The city rate went from 11.3 to 10%, and the county rate went from 9.7 to 8.6% of unemployment last year. A bit more than one in six of our residents over 25 did not graduate from high school. The county figure is 14.6, so even countywide, we're not really stellar in that category. Only one...
Is that just residents counted in the workforce, or is that total residents over 25?
Total residents over 25. And then only one in six of our residents over 25 have a bachelor's degree or higher. One census tract had only 1.5% of the residents over 25 with a bachelor's degree or higher. The county figure is 19.1%. And then some data from 2010 census, that would be the short form census data form that folks filled out, that compares Hagerstown with four of the cities in our region with median family income below poverty and the bachelor's degree or higher statistic. Hagerstown's median family income was 42,837. Our below poverty number was still 22.1%, and the bachelor's degree or higher is 16.4%. I compared us to Cumberland, Chambersburg, Martinsburg, and Waynesboro. We also have data for Frederick, but we know that we never compare, in a way we'd want to brag about, with Frederick. So I did not leave that in here. But these are folks that you would think would be in a similar shape as we are, or maybe would struggle even more than we are, but as you can see, in fact, we struggle more than these smaller communities that are in our area. Cumberland's median family income is higher than ours, their poverty level is lower, although their bachelor's degree or higher level is a little bit lower than us. Chambersburg, basically, all four of these other cities have a higher median family income than Hagerstown. And all of them have a lower poverty level, but then when it gets into the bachelor's degree or higher, three of them, one of them is worse off than we are, and, or better than we are, and two are better than we are and two are worse. So you can see, we're in the middle of the pack with the bachelor's degree or higher with these other four cities, but we are in worse shape with poverty level and with median family income. And those are not things that help us when we're trying to recruit new businesses to the community. In the 2012 development report, the activity that was occurring last year, we issued 240 residential building permits valued at 6.14 million, including 34 new housing units. Since 2009, our new housing unit starts have been at or below the mid-1990s level. During the height of the boom, which is for us, 2004, 2006, we had unprecedented permit activity for new housing units at 395 to 675 per year. But now, we're down even below what we were doing before the boom, and that's probably because we're pretty saturated with product at the moment, and the economy has still not climbed up for housing. The active developments in 2012, there's five of them, all of them as a result of annexations into the city. Collegiate Acres, which was annexed in 2003, Cortland Villas in 2001, Greenwich Park, that's the development way out on Mount Etna Road in the city, that was annexed in 99, Hager's Crossing in 1998, and Potomac Manor, we have one, the last section of Potomac Manor is in the city, that's that development across the street from the Y. And then we also had a concept plan approved for 272 multifamily units at Collegiate Acres by Trey Alter, but that has to get through the APFO for schools, and that would be a significant hurdle that they will have to overcome, since two of the schools that that development would go to are over capacity. In terms of commercial activity, we issued 255 commercial building permits valued at $35.7 million. The majority of that was for Bestor Elementary School. Site plans were approved for 137,000 square feet of commercial and institutional development with an estimated value of $29.9 million. The estimated value we had from Bestor was $23 million, so you can see that of the activity last year, Bestor was a big chunk of the value. We had, for whatever reason, we had a lot of regional and national chain development activity on the dual highway last year. Supreme Buffet Hibachi Grill and Sushi went into the old Ames, and that was a retrofit of the space. The Sonic built a new building out there, down by Edgewood. Med Express retrofitted the old Tri-State Electric building. ProBuild went in behind that building. Taco Bell tore down their building, built back a new building. Checkers went into that old, I don't know if it was like a tire place, out there right next door to Sonic. Jimmy John's went into the Martin's Shopping Center, and Walgreens is still under construction. And we issued a permit in December, and now it's underway for the AutoZone that's going in front of the old Ames Shopping Center. We had more medical construction. It slowed down a bit, but we had more of it last year. Antedent Pediatrics on Omega Drive, which is the light business park that annexed in 2005. Professional Center on Eastern Boulevard, that's the old Food Lion that annexed in 2011. They now have several tenants in that building. First Choice Pediatrics on Pennsylvania Avenue, they, it was going to be a retrofit of a house, but it seems more like it was a takedown and put back up, a new, a small medical building out there on Pennsylvania Avenue. And then we had a site plan for another large medical building at the Light Business Park, Trilogy Two, which would be beside the big one that's back there, and between it and the way you would get back to the Kiwanis Boat Park. And that also was the 2005 annexation. And then in the downtown, or city center, as we like to call it, there was a number of renovation projects that were underway. The three private projects were all PEP projects, Partners in Economic Progress Program, the city's incentive program to encourage this type of activity. The Wareham Building at 138 West Washington Street, which is being renovated for offices by Mr. Ansari. He's already got one tenant, upper floor tenant, that was approved through PEP. The Mulberry Lofts at 22 North Mulberry Street, which is the old Action Products Factory, and that's being renovated for offices and artistic kind of spaces by Mr. Loughlin. That's a PEP project. We've approved now three businesses on one of the upper floors through PEP. He's also got a karate studio on the lower level that did not go through PEP, for whatever reason. And then Mr. Lyles has renovated 140 South Potomac Street for two office tenants, and they should be moving in pretty soon. One really imminently, and one in the beginning of March. And then the two city projects that were still underway last year, that's the renovating of 36 to 40 North Potomac Street, which is the building that Rockies is in. We're creating four artist loft housing units on the upper floor. And then 56, 58 West Washington Street, the old CVS building. We created space for USMH, which is going to have a ribbon cutting soon, February 4th, at 4:00. So be there.
Next Monday.
That's right. And so that concludes my report on the development activity from last year, as well as the demographic data that we put together for you. I don't know if you have any questions or comments? Okay, great.
I have a couple of comments. And I'll just go through. On page three of the 2011 ACS census data, and this is just some of the things I think might be helpful, at least for me to understand a little better, is, you know, you outline a couple of specific census tracts with data, but I think it would be good if I sort of understood a little better of, within these various tracts, and these are things that I think we need to look at a little more, is the stats related to, you know, the senior population? Because I would imagine that at least one of these census tracts, you know, you're going to find, you know, a couple of the towers. And another item is, you know, the areas where there is a high concentration of subsidized or public housing. And I think in general, just looking at sort of, not so much how we're doing in the census tracts as strictly data, but rather, where are we seeing a rise in what I would deem, you know, the impacting demographic features that impact frankly our ability to provide services, our ability to sustain a healthy tax base in those neighborhoods, and figure that out. On page four, while I think it's good to look at these other entities that we're clearly struggling even to keep pace with, I think that there is a sense of sort of where we want to be, and I'm glad you brought up the Frederick scenario in terms of demographics and community investment. And for me, I would like to see sort of where other cities, more similar to our size, you know, maybe not specifically in our region, but I think it's important for us to see places like Gaithersburg and Rockville and Frederick and Westminster, see the growth that they've experienced, see what factors, in terms of demographics, they're experiencing or have experienced, that have benefited them, to give us sort of a better idea of what to work toward. And, you know, we talked, you know, eight years ago about increasing homeownership. And we see Gaithersburg was a good example, where they were at 40% homeownership at one point, and turned around and jumped up to 55%. So I think seeing those good demographics, how those larger municipalities have changed over time, and what things that they have implemented to create that change, I think, you know, builds on this sort of roadmap for where we want to be, not necessarily looking at our, you know, rural neighbors and, you know, seeing sort of where they're at and wanting to just stay, step ahead of them.
And that's, that analysis we did with the other towns, we did eight other communities around us, including Westminster and Winchester and Frederick. And we were coming at the bottom of the pack in a number of categories.
Yeah, and I'd like to understand sort of what they, you know, what steps they've taken, you know, over time that has generated that, you know, that growth in a positive direction. And then on page six, I'd like to understand, because as you point out, the Bestor Elementary School is 23 million of the 29.9 million that we identify in commercial institutional development, but I think it's clearly important to see what that other three-point, or I'm sorry, 6.9 million is, because if that is other types of institutional development or other type of, you know, non-profitable development, I think that that also, you know, lends itself to figuring out sort of what direction we're going. And then on page seven, where you outline a good indication of things that have come in, I'd like to see a list at some point of the entities that have left, and why, and where they're leaving from. I think until we sort of understand those dynamics, you know, we're not going to be able to address sort of how you turn that around. And page eight, I thought, was probably the best part of the presentation, because I think it's a good focus on what, in other words, what's coming here, and these are the things I think we really want to expand, but I'm not certain that we've answered yet sort of a focus on where, and I think that speaks to this whole master development plan we're talking about, because I don't think we focus on one specific location. But if these businesses and these types of businesses are coming in these locations, I think it's important to understand where they want to go, because at the end of the day, as everyone points out, you know, it's about increasing the tax base. And while we're sitting here talking about, you know, three other priorities of larger projects, meanwhile, these businesses that are clearly the boost to our tax base, you know, want to go somewhere else and want our investment in some other type of infrastructure to make them thrive, then I think we need to take a step back and say, hey, wait a second, you know... second, you know, we're talking about this big project over here, when in reality, the business growth is happening over in this other sector and it's because of the infrastructure investment that we're making and we need to make more of that infrastructure investment there and reprioritize.
You know, we have a lot of commercial office activity over the last few years on Eastern Boulevard, because it's basically, two developers have made a lot of ground pad ready out there. There's one or two acre sites ready to go.
And we've invested in doubling the, you know, the lane, you know, the traffic lanes out there and there's other things, putting in the California T at one time. And then the last item is on page nine, you identify two projects, the 36 to 40 North Potomac Street and the 56 to 58 West Washington Street. Both are city-created. And while it's certainly good for reinvestment in downtown, we certainly can't be the only or the largest entity doing that reinvestment. And so, you know, I look at those two projects and I look at some of our past examples where the city has sort of secured the buildings and secured the properties. And then, much like, you know, this process with the Midtown Hotel, have an intention to turn them over for private investment and private development. I think we need to keep an awareness of not becoming the purchaser and the developer, but the purchaser for private development to ensue in.
Like we did with 140 South Potomac.
Right. But in these other two examples, and for whatever reason, that hasn't been the case. So those are my comments.
And just real quick, the last administration did work hard, the city staff worked hard to increase the assessable base, to give incentives, make the right judgment about how much incentive, not enough, how much to get those properties. The Planning Commission, Mr. Mayor, you served on the Planning Commission, worked hard to make those business parks work and to make viable plans for those areas. And so I think there's a consciousness of needing to raise the tax base that everybody has worked at. But downtown is the trouble spot and that's where the attention is going. But no, I do agree. We can't neglect other areas and there are specialty uses that we won't be able to bring downtown, unfortunately, I guess. But, and that's why I think we have to keep working at that tax base through annexation and wise use of our utility policy and so forth.
I agree with that and also with Mr. Alshar's comments about the demographic challenges that we have.
Oh, yeah.
It would be interesting to have a more detailed breakdown of the, I guess by census tract of, you know, what he's saying in terms of the concentration of subsidized housing or elderly folks who, you know, or disabled people who may be of working age, but they have a disability. I'm not sure how that all gets worked out in the census, but I think that's definitely part of our challenge.
We know the subsidized stuff's not in the census, but we know where they are. We have a list of those projects. And what we can get, the senior, the senior stuff would be in the census.
Because I think that does have a huge impact on the data that we look at when it comes to, not overall in the city, but when we start breaking it down by census tract, I think it does have quite an impact.
Well, you look at, the other cities are more closely linked to the metropolitan areas. The metropolitan area, Washington Metropolitan Area is one of the highest levels of education and income in the United States. And being linked to that, those municipalities draw on that. Now, they also have adopted policies of certain types of housing and so forth that, you know, I think are worth looking at and homeownership policies. Gaithersburg has expanded enormously. I remember when it had 9,000 people and it's 60,000 now. So, and a lot of that's been homeowner, you know, it's not necessarily single-family homeownership, but homeownership.
Kathy, I'd just like to tell you that this is a good piece of research. I'm sure you've put a lot of time into this. And not only that, it's a good snapshot of what we face in order to build a community. The unemployment rates in some of our, some parts of Hagerstown are just unbelievable.
And the poverty rate.
And the poverty rate, just unbelievable. So it's a very, very stark snapshot of what we have to do. It would be interesting to see a comparison to Frederick, because it would be a vastly different sort of thing. It's really handy to be part of, almost part of Montgomery County, which Frederick is, and to have a lot of wealth, which Frederick has, because has a lot of high-paid government employees living there. So that would be an interesting thing, but it certainly, it certainly will not, with the extra distance between Frederick and Hagerstown, it certainly is not a goal that any of us are going to reach, I think, in our lifetime.
Well, it does tie into downtown though, because the amount of, not just the amount of population, but the level of disposable income in there is so much higher per capita that is available to spend in stores and services.
When we show this type of data to the Planning Commission, they feel that there's more value to see how we're comparing in our region, because they feel there's so many other factors occurring in the DC Baltimore area that drives up those values. They don't feel it's really comparing apples and apples, which is why we didn't include in here the comparison to the statewide averages or to Frederick, because, or Gaithersburg or whoever, because they are in a totally different boat than we are.
They're in a different metropolitan statistical area as well.
The one I thought was most interesting was Wayne's Borough. Wayne's Borough has a, as I recall it, has a much lower poverty rate, but also a much lower educational rate than we have, I think, as I recall it. A lot of factors make those.
I think there's a lot of highly skilled mechanical folks in Wayne's Borough that have highly skilled jobs where you need a lot of education, but they don't have that formal bachelor's degree. They make good money.
Penny, did you have a comment?
Yeah. And not that this was ever taken into account, but knowing that we have now a lot of group homes that are in the area, you're looking at a base as far as what that income is, certainly that's not going to help in any way, because it's going to be very low. You have as many as probably four clients or even more, and I don't know how many there are. Again, we're looking at that. Now, I would say that the homes that they are in, I don't know either if that has been purchased by the institutions that have put them there, all right? There again affects tax base, if that is the case, if we're not getting tax revenue. The nonprofits that we have, there's still not an understanding as to how many actually owns the facility that they're in, the house that they're in, whatever it be, a building that they're in. No one has ever come back and said, okay, this is how many nonprofits that could be on the tax base, but there aren't. And it would be interesting to see that. And again, that's not in the census. So, you know, when we're compared, I pass the note over to Kristen and I say, Kristen, probably with our housing and with Section 8, a lot of the people there that are being assisted is not going to come up. And we've got a lot of that. We have a lot of that there. And as we continue to bring more in, because unfortunately for us, this is the place to come for a lot of amenities, and I can only see it expanding. You know, I'm just really surprised that all of these apartment buildings haven't been filled up yet. But I don't, I don't know how it's going to increase as far as being able to have spendable dollars here in the city, you know?
I think another thing to look at is a question that I have, is does the city end up taking on more of the county's poor? In other words, you know, the city and the county both have a housing authority.
Right.
Is it such that the city ends up, you know, taking on folks who live in the county but end up in the city in order to get housing or other kinds of services that you're talking about?
The housing authority in the county is small compared to what we have. I do know that. And as far as what they have out there as Section 8 being subsidized, I'd like to see those statistics.
Well, I mean, when you have almost double the poverty in the city than you do in the county.
Correct.
The question is, is that because in order to receive housing?
Yeah.
Those folks have to move and become residents of the city?
Yeah, yeah.
And so I guess that's a question I don't have an answer to.
Well, it's more, there's more amenities here in the city, because they don't have to drive. If you have no vehicles, then everything is right here. You can go by foot, okay? Or you come into the city and depending, again, on how much money you make, you can get vouchers for taxis. You know, I mean, it's just something to look at, because certainly, you know, you have, all of this is here, but why is it? You know, what are we really looking? Of course, I've been fighting this battle for a long time, but I still don't have any answers. You know, nonprofits, if they own their building and they pay no taxes, that is a killer, you know? I mean, look, the churches are bad enough and they don't pay taxes, so.
I wouldn't say they're bad enough.
No, I'm, and as far as not paying taxes.
Right.
It doesn't matter, I get crucified on that anyway. But, you know.
It's only the sinning churches that are.
Right.
I don't think.
Well, let's continue with the presentation, unless anyone else has any other pressing questions or comments. Thank you, Kathy.
Well, we'll look into those questions you had.
Thanks.
It'll take a little while for Penny's.
Oh, you know.
Okay, well, the next page we'll look at, I'll cover the next couple, then we'll pass it off to the Finance Department. If we could look at page one, just to briefly cover the history and the finances, so it's the first page after Kathy's presentation. These are budgeted amounts for the current year on the far right-hand column, last year on the middle column, and the prior year on the first column on the left. And this is just the general fund. So it's intended to give the mayor and council a bit of a snapshot of how we got to where we're at in terms of recent history. And it really began for us in August of 2009. We had just begun a new fiscal year when the state advised us that they were going to be pulling back highway user revenue and police protection grant revenue mid-year. And so we made mid-year budget adjustments in '09, '10, which aren't totally reflected here, but they're carried forward into the subsequent years. So what you see in '10, '11, on the column on the left, you can see a couple of things I think are noteworthy on the revenue. First is, it was the last year of the triennial and we had still some very good growth in our property tax revenue, coming off of some pretty high assessment values from December 2007, that triennial. We had major losses in state and county revenue in '10, '11, just under $4 million in lost revenue to the general fund. So with the increase in property tax revenue of one point, almost 1.4, loss of state and county of nearly four, and the other variations in revenue that you see there, and we're comparing budget to budget, '10, '11 to '09, '10, we had a net loss of just under $3 million, a 7.1% decrease in general fund revenues. And we adjusted to that in coordination with the mayor and council. We focused on the expenditure side of our budget. We didn't raise tax revenues. We didn't raise revenues in general. We focused on expenditure reductions. The mayor and council had a phrase of trying to redesign the way we operate. And so, as you would expect in a city budget, most of that impact on expenditures is going to be on wages and benefits, because nearly 70% of our general fund is personnel-related. And so in '10, '11, that first column, you can see how we offset the loss of the 7.1% revenue with reductions in expenditures. The middle column then shows that while we didn't have additional losses of the state and county, it carried forward, but it wasn't new revenue loss. We did have a major new revenue loss in the property tax, the first year of the triennial assessment coming off of December 2010, just under 2.2 million in lost property tax revenue. So a bit of a double whammy from the recession, state and county reductions, then the property tax revenue reduction. The total reduction in that year, 4.6%. This is comparing FY '11, '12 to '10, '11, the most recently completed fiscal year. And once again, you can see how we offset that on the expenditure side with reductions in wages and benefits to cover the loss of revenues. No new revenue in '11, '12 last year. And then in the third column, the current year, that's one we talked about a year ago and in my introductory comments, we saw kind of a stabilization of the general fund, actually a 2.2% increase after two years of significant drops. We didn't have a drop in property tax revenue, because it was worked into the revenues from the first year of the triennial. We did increase our fine and forfeiture revenue. That would have been the initial implementation of the Safe Schools Zone Speed Camera Program. So you can see how that started to come into play. On the expenditure side, we actually increased our wage and benefit expenditures a little bit in the current year, and we had kind of a good fortune in terms of just our debt service payment schedules. You can see in the current year that we had a $513,000 decrease in general fund-supported debt service in the current year, based on the retirement of prior bond issues. So a stabilizing situation in the current year, but once again, no COLAs for employees in any of those three fiscal years and no step increases for employee in the current year or last fiscal year. So that helped us save a lot of money in terms of expenditures that would have gone up had we had approved wage increases for employees.
I'm sorry, I missed the detail for the $367,000 for increase in contracted services.
That would be tied to Breckford, the contractual services for speed cameras, because if you remember, on speed cameras, we're going to have gross revenue.
That goes against the increase in fines up in your revenue.
Right. So there's an offset on that.
Could you elaborate more on the increases, the $715,000 in increases in wages? Is that we hired more staff or?
Primarily increases that related to health, dental insurance increases, as well as workers' compensation.
Thank you.
And then finally, it was also, in prior years, we had instated furlough days, and that was lifted during this time, so it made the wages appear higher.
That's, once again, these are budget to budget. Since the approval of the budget, we've added the three captains, we've reinstated five police officers with the grant. So those wouldn't be reflected in these numbers. We're, just for ease of comparison, looking at budget to budget here.
Thank you.
And one thing before we turn, and it'll show up again later, but that $2 million that you see at the very top in the middle column, that decrease stays down, which I know everybody knows, but people tend to forget. Once that money's lost, that $2 million loss applies. We have that much less to spend every successive year during the triennial assessment. So that's a continuing item. Just because it doesn't show up, it, you know, in the third column, doesn't mean that we're dealing with $2 million less than we had those other years.
Anything else on the history page? And then just a quick overview of kind of general budget issues, and then we'll get into the specific funds. Some of this is though, specific to the general fund, just because it's our major operating fund. And I think this kind of follows up on Councilmember Brubaker's comment. Well, we'd like to just emphasize, and we're looking at the current year's budget in that first point under general fund revenue, our current year, FY '12, '13 general fund revenue is $3.8 million lower than FY '09, '10. So we're operating with just under $4 million less in revenue today than we had three fiscal years ago, which reinforces that these revenue reductions, whether property tax, state and county revenue are carrying through for us. In staffing, it's important for all of us. It's had an impact on all of our operations, these unfunded positions. This year, the city's operating with 16 unfunded positions in the general fund, 15 unfunded position in other city operations. We have reinstated the five police officer positions, the three firefighter, or fire captain positions, but we still have 16 unfunded positions in the general fund and a total of 31 for the entire city. Property tax rate, 78.8 cents. It's been in place for a number of years. That's just the city rate. That doesn't include the county rate for properties within the city. That's been the same rate since FY '08, '09. Collective bargaining agreements, just a reminder, all four of our collective bargaining contracts expire in June of this year, June 2013. Negotiations with the unions will begin approximately in March. And that'll have an impact on how we finalize the budget with mayor and council in April and May. Our bond rating. We last went to Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's in July of 2011. This is really an important issue for us from a financial management standpoint. It's one that we take very seriously in terms of how do independent financial firms rate our creditworthiness, our financial management, and the financial resources of the community. And so we got excellent ratings from both firms in July 2011, AA minus from S&amp;P, AA three from Moody's. That's always subject to change. One of the things they look the hardest at are the kind of community economic data that we were looking at just a few minutes ago. Because they look at the ability of the community to afford and provide the resources required by the city government. COLAs. As I mentioned, our employees have made major sacrifices to help us get through the impact of the recession, the impact of that loss of nearly $4 million in revenues in the general fund. And we've taken an approach of all our employees contribute. So this information applies to all funds, all employees. All city employees have gone four consecutive years without a cost of living adjustment. We've gone three fiscal years to date without step increases. We talked a year ago that we were going to try to include some kind of wage adjustment in the budget for the coming year. We've done that in the preliminary numbers for the coming year. We think that's really important that we do that. I think to ask employees to go more than four years without a wage adjustment is, goes beyond what I'm comfortable with. And so as we get into further detail on next year's numbers, we'll have to discuss that a little bit more. But both the COLAs and the step increases, we understand that they're contingent on collective bargaining negotiations and also future discussions with the mayor and council and your priorities and your preferences in the area of employee pay increases. But it is an issue we'll need to consider. Next year, as I said, will be the third and final year of the current triennial. We'll need to keep an eye on that December 2013 triennial because that's for Hagerstown city properties. And we included information on the assessments for these areas around Smithsburg, Funkstown, Boonesboro, an average decrease in residential values of 10.5% and an average increase of 8.5 on commercial values. And so Michelle works very closely with Adam Lewis in the assessor's office. And they have a lot of communication back and forth. They meet periodically. They'll start the appraisals. They probably are gearing up to do it now and into the summer. But we won't know results until the very end of this calendar year. So just a reminder there. Once again, in the first year of the current triennial, we experienced about a $2 million drop in real estate revenue for the city. We don't think it'll be that large next year, but we're projecting, and you'll see in our numbers, a projected loss or drop as a result of the triennial. We've not included any funding for SORA, or the SORA project, in these preliminary budget figures. We know that's a work in progress with the mayor and council. We had a good discussion earlier this afternoon. And we'll need to adjust the budget as your discussions and decisions unfold in reference to the scope and schedule of that project. Just a heads up, and Michelle will talk about this a little bit more. We've got a bond issue scheduled for the current fiscal year. We hope to have it in place by the end of June. It's for about $4.2 million. $1 million of that in the general fund, the rest in water and wastewater. But those bond issues are important for us and it ties back to those credit ratings and impacts our operating budget in terms of the debt service. So we'll talk more about that in a few minutes. We've talked about unemployment. We've talked about income, health insurance. Just wanted to give you a heads up. We've had some very good years of experience with our health insurance program, which is a self-insured program. We have high deductible levels on individual coverage and aggregate coverage for our group of employees and retirees. And keep in mind, this is health insurance for more than just employees. It's for retirees as well. But we're starting to experience in the current year some increases in claims experience. And so CBIZ, who works with us on assessing and managing our health insurance program, they're telling us we need to prepare for an increase in health insurance next year. We really haven't seen too much of that in recent years, in the past, I'll say, two, three years. We put in 8.9% as an increase for health insurance for the coming year in our preliminary numbers. CBIZ says it could go as high as 12. That's something we're working on here in the next couple of months. But just a heads up that health insurance is impacting us next year more than we had anticipated a year ago. Pensions. Each year, we get numbers from the state in terms of our employee participation in the state of Maryland pension program. This is separate from the police and fire pension presentation and program that you heard about two weeks ago. That's a city pension program. But the state tells us what to budget as the employer's share for our employees participating in the state pension program. And so for non-sworn police and fire, and meaning all other employees other than sworn police and fire, what they're saying is that the employer's contribution for the state pension will increase from 8.99% to 10% in the coming fiscal years, coming fiscal year. That'll fluctuate. It actually went down a little bit in the current year. So it'll fluctuate based on their investment history and the kind of information you saw two weeks ago on the city's police and fire pension. But we've got a slight increase there. On the city's pension program for police and fire, we've also got an anticipated increase there. Different numbers in the state, in this case, for the city's police and fire, it's an increase of 11.29% to 12.2 as the employer share there. For both the state pension and the city's police and fire pension, the employees also make a contribution, and we need to mention that. It's 7% for both pensions, the cities and the state pension. You know, each year, we pay close attention to the state, state of Maryland's budget. They're starting to see some improvement in some of their numbers there. And so what we've seen reported in the governor's proposed budget is that they have restored highway user revenues for Maryland municipalities to about 50% of historic funding levels. It was the highway user revenue that was the biggest drop for Hagerstown and other Maryland cities and counties in August of 2009. For us, what that means is that our highway user revenue in the coming year is projected to increase to 722,000, 723, about 723,000, an increase of 416,000 over the current year. And we've got that money, and I think this is a very wise move in terms of how we have that money positioned. It's positioned for capital improvement projects, street preservation, curbs and sidewalks, other infrastructure projects, one-time capital projects. So as those numbers fluctuate, because over time, there will be fluctuations in that, it doesn't impact our general operating revenues that are funding wages and benefits. So the highway user revenue of 722, we have in for next year, funding capital improvement projects. And that's a big help for us. The governor's budget also includes a restoration of state aid for police protection grants for Maryland municipalities. And that's a good thing. It's been reduced for the past five years. And for us, we're projecting that our general fund revenue from police protection will increase from five, I'll say, 517,000 to 650,000. Just a word of caution that these are the governor's proposed budgets. I guess it could change over the next two months as the state legislature works on the budget. But that's encouraging information from the state and very helpful, both for general fund revenues in terms of the police protection and our capital improvement projects. And then one last point from me, because it is a major part of our budget. In terms of wastewater and water service charges or our rate schedule. Back in 2009, the mayor and council adopted a five-year rate schedule for water and wastewater rates, which was really very helpful, I think, for both businesses, residents and city operations. Because then we knew what to expect over five years. We weren't having to revisit rates every year. So the staff really appreciated the five-year rate schedule. But the next year's budget is the last year of that five-year rate schedule. And so much of those service charges go towards the capital improvement projects that we're doing in the water and wastewater operations, both the treatment plants, the collection system, the distribution system. And we've done a lot of those upgrades. Our staff and the utilities have really done a nice job of getting the wastewater plant upgraded, water plant. And we've dealt with I&amp;I in the collection system. But there's more work yet to be done. And so we're going to need to discuss with you in the next, I'll say, 12 months, recommendations regarding a five-year rate schedule to take us beyond the next fiscal year. So that's something that lies ahead for us. And ultimately, mayor and council can decide how you wish to handle those rate increases. As you might recall, there's rates for customers inside the city and outside of the city for both water and wastewater. And Mike and his staff will come in at a later date to talk to you about that. So it's not something you have to wrestle with specifically for the coming year's budget. It's in place with the fifth year of that rate schedule.
Yeah, I think we did it in the fall last time. So you'd be looking in the fall for, say, you have numbers to build into the FY '15.
Yeah, we didn't have it scheduled for a July 1 rate adjustment.
Right, right. Well, July 1, you're still assuming the last of the 5%.
Right.
I would say that, you know, I think it'd only fair to look. I think the ramping up policy works pretty well. But what that number ought to be ought to be thoroughly justified on both sides.
You'll recall, both the council and the staff worked pretty hard on that analysis.
I do. I'm only saying.
It wasn't an easy process. That's why I'm mentioning.
I'm only saying that we need to take a close look at what that number ought to be.
Right, and it is important. I mean, it's a significant impact on our customers. And so it'll be important for mayor and council to work on that when we get to that point. So those are kind of general heads up, as well as synopsis of the budget in general. Any questions for me before we jump into the general fund? Doing okay so far?
I have a couple of questions. The first is a comment related to staffing. And the only, the comment that I have there is, you know, I don't, I don't, I try not to see the staffing within the general fund the same as the staffing within the enterprise fund systems. Enterprise fund systems are a business, some of which are clearly, you know, utilized for investment of economic development. And for me, and I think this speaks a bit to when we get into negotiations with the union memberships, is that simply because I would support staffing, you know, reinstatement in the light department doesn't mean I'm going to support that same measure in the water department. And I use this example. I think in staffing in the light department, you are down nine people. You have a staff of 40. That's almost 25% of your workforce within the light department. There are clearly deficiencies that are occurring, things that are being deferred. Because of that, in terms of maintenance. However, on the water side, you are 55% complete in your instituting your radio read meter systems, which creates efficiencies within the staffing. So for me, I look at that and say, there's five people down in the water side, but we're creating a more efficient system of reading meters and therefore, there may not be the necessity to put those five staff folks, or, you know, fund those five staff folks in that department, because you're becoming more efficient in that operation. Whereas the light department, you're expanding services, you're expanding utility continually. You're clearly down in that, and it's just a different set of dynamics. So that's my comment on staffing. And then the second thing is a question of the federal grant that will be applied to the five police officer positions. Just a question of how long? Is that indefinite, three years, five years?
It's not indefinite. I believe it's only a three-year grant.
Okay.
And it's not 100% funding. There is a general fund match.
The next item on that page was the COLA and the step increase proposal, both of which have a tagline that says that I likely need for a property tax rate increase. I can tell you just one member of council. I do not have an appetite for stepping in the office two months and entertaining a discussion on tax increases, especially if we haven't had a discussion yet on other things that we can look at, one of which I'll get to later on. But for me, I'd like to attempt to do one of those two items, at least one of those two items. But I'd like to figure out, number one, you know, which is the most affordable of those items? But number two, which is the fairest? Because I clearly understand there's a difference between how the steps go and what the COLA is. So I think having that information as we go through the budget process would be beneficial. And then on the second page, under health insurance and employee pensions, there was a program, and I've alluded to this before, that occurred in Frederick County among those respective governing bodies, whereby they sat down over a period of about, you know, 18 months and looked at things like, and I know folks talk all the time about this consolidation. And you see it in this county EDC draft plan, where, you know, where they want to take over, you know, the EDC department and put it under one. That wasn't the process there. The process was you sat down and you figured out, okay, you know, you have four governing entities that are doing these operations. You know, are there ways that they can communicate and do their operations more efficiently together, still as singular units? That's a conversation I'd like to have as it relates, and I've said it before, as it relates to health insurance, you know, bidding out for audit services, looking at employee pension system. Because I think it gets back to that conversation we had with CBIZ the other week, where, you know, we started out at 7% and we're now approaching 12.5%. You know, and at what point do you determine, you know, how sustainable that contribution is as it relates to the overall budget? Because at the end of the day, it comes down to staffing, raises, and benefits. And you're going to have to find some level of affordability among those three primary factors that are going to drive those wage-related costs. And the next item was on the water and wastewater services charges. I understand the five-year model. I'm completely fine with continuing to implement the fifth year of that. However, you know, I can remember discussions some long time back about our focus on that cost assessment and rate system in terms of how it is applied to in-city rate customers and outside-of-city rate customers. And I'd clearly like to make sure that as we go through that update for the next five years, that we clearly account for the fact that, you know, the folks that are the shareholders, the citizens, you know, property owners of this city, that are the shareholders of this system we continue to invest in and expand, be given full credit for that as it applies to how we set the rate scheme across the board for outside-of-city and inside-of-city customer base. Because there is a difference in terms of responsibility to that debt for those that we can apply it to in our incorporated limits and those we can't, that we serve outside of our corporate limits. So, you know, I know that that is a bit technical, but I'm sure staff understands what I'm referring to as it applies to the rate model. And the fact that in-city customers continue to see a percentage, a larger percentage increase than outside-of-city customers. And the other item you had in here that you didn't really touch on that much was the stormwater state mandate. You know, there are a growing number of jurisdictions that haven't fully accepted those state directives. So before we go setting, you know, a fee in that direction, I would be interested. So before we go setting, you know, a fee in that direction, I would be interested to see how that's going to play out politically.
Okay. Well, before you go on a little bit anymore on the general fund, I'd like to maybe just go over some of these things and hopefully maybe answer some of your questions. And then we'll come back to it, and you can let me know if you have any additional questions or comments regarding anything related to the general fund. So I'll just start with vehicle and equipment purchases. Just want to...
Page four.
I'm on page four of the budget packet here.
Okay.
Just want to reiterate that for the last three or more years, we've been deferring our vehicle and equipment purchases to try to cut operating expenditures as well as capital expenditures and help offset the $4 million in revenue losses that we've experienced. In the current year, because revenues kind of stabilized a little bit, we did try to bring back some of those vehicle and equipment purchases. However, in fiscal year '14, we're finding that, and beyond, we're finding that revenues are beginning to constrain again. So we've started to look at deferring our vehicle and equipment purchases again in future years. As far as the stormwater and state mandate, Hagerstown, along with other municipal towns and counties, face the potential for major costs associated with the EPA, as well as state mandates requiring local governments to meet water quality improvement goals to help the Chesapeake Bay watershed. We're estimating that those costs could go up into the hundreds of millions of dollars, depending on the ultimate, you know, requirements that the state imposes upon the city. Our financial projections prepared during fiscal year '13 did assume that we would implement that stormwater management fee during fiscal year '14, and at this time we have taken that out. So that did reduce fiscal year '14 revenue estimates by $750,000 for that six-month period, and then by $1.5 million in following fiscal years. We've removed this revenue item from next year's budget, as well as future years, pending any future, pending future discussions with mayor and council, as well as confirmation from the state.
But you're also not including the associated expenditures.
Exactly.
Right. So taking the revenues out, but taking expenditures out as well.
Well, the expenditures related to any capital improvements would be taken out.
Well, if, right, if the state mandates something, then everybody around the state has to figure out how to pay for it.
Right.
Right. But not unilaterally, as I agree with Kristen. We can't do it unilaterally.
No. For the future COLA and STEP increases, we have included a contingency amount of about $800,000 in the general fund to fund some sort of adjustments, either COLA, possible restoration of funding for some of the unfunded positions that we have in the general fund, as well as potential for any other types of collective bargaining adjustments made by the upcoming union negotiations. Again, all of those amounts are contingent upon mayor and council approval, as well as the union negotiations that are coming up. Property tax revenue, Bruce touched on this earlier, and I just want to reinforce that 70% of our general fund revenue does come from our property tax. And in fiscal year '12, the city budget did reflect a $2.2 million decrease in property tax revenue as a result of the first year of our triennial reassessment. That reassessment was done in December of 2010. Something that we did not anticipate was a decline in our corporate personal property tax in fiscal year '12. So in fiscal year '13, we're seeing about $700,000 in a loss in our property tax revenue for personal property taxes that was not expected. We have factored that into fiscal year '14 and have reduced our personal property tax by $655,000 in fiscal year '14.
Are we investigating what's going on there?
We did. We did do a comparison of personal property tax bills for our businesses located in the city. And what we're finding is that some of our larger businesses, Verizon, typically utilities, Verizon, cable, CSX, things like that, they're not reinvesting in the city. So as their fixed assets are being depreciated, the value of the, their book value of those is coming down. So their bills are actually coming down in time. And if they're not reinvesting in their fixed assets in the city, their bills aren't going to go back up.
So it wasn't, go ahead. Refresh me, is that self-reporting, or is that assessed?
Self-reporting.
It's self-reporting.
It's based on their personal property tax report or forms.
Two questions. The first is, because I had that section circled a couple of times, and the question I have is, and I think you alluded to when you talked about the larger corporations, so there was no impact on this from the loss of the Good Humor Briar Company?
There was a small impact from that, but the largest ones are typically fiber-related, cable-related?
So that brings me to my second question, because I've gotten an education on this issue in the last year or so, in relation to utilities and the ability within the state. Obviously, municipalities can set three types of tax. They can set your property tax, your personal property tax, and then your utility tax. And I believe that the city of Hagerstown sets only two of those three. And the third is associated strictly, or is correlated directly with the personal. But there are other jurisdictions around the state that set a combination of the two, where they take the utility tax and they combine the business real personal property tax and the regular property tax. And part of the impetus for that, and I use this example, let's take a large utility that's regulated by the federal government, gas transportation. When that tax occurs, that tax is applied as a portion of the net worth of that total company. So it isn't applied to the entity as a property owner. In other words, it would be like taxing McDonald's for all the McDonald's that are owned, and that little bit of the slice of the pie of McDonald's that you sort of have in your jurisdiction is how it's applied to these utilities. And I'm just curious if we'd ever considered looking at the application of a different type of utility tax on those utilities, as utilities continue to expand and continue to expand their necessity for the application of our services. And I think it's generally associated with, you know, the protection of.
What I can do is I can look into that further. I do know that the state does have some limitations on the types of taxes that the city can impose, but I definitely will look into it. It's definitely worth looking into.
Some jurisdictions also have a utility tax. It's not paid by the utilities. It's paid by the utility users. It's a prorated tax, and that gets at a lot of organizations that don't, that are exempt from property taxes.
Because they don't have physical establishment within the jurisdiction.
So, well, no, it's based on their use of utilities within that jurisdiction.
Like a stormwater management fee would be based on their use of...
I'm not recommending that. I'm just saying there is such a thing in Maryland.
All right. So, real estate, personal property tax, we have forecasted it will remain stable for fiscal year '14 at $19.5 million. And again, I just want to reiterate the fact that in fiscal year '15, based on the most recent triennial reassessment for Washington County, we are anticipating that in fiscal year '15, we will see additional decreases in our real estate assessable base. We're anticipating that overall real estate will decrease by another 5% to 8% in fiscal year '15. Income tax at this point, we're expecting it to remain flat for fiscal year '14 at $2.2 million. That is a very low amount compared to the high from fiscal year '18 of $2.5 million. Property tax rate and the need to strengthen revenues, the city has really been avoiding property tax rate increases over the past three fiscal years, despite the fact that we've had major losses in our revenues, not only from the state and county shared revenues, but in our assessable base. We've adjusted our operations, lowered staffing, and reduced expenditures. And that is primarily how we recouped the $3.8 million in revenue losses since fiscal year '09, '10. Hagerstown does need to give consideration for the likely need of a property tax rate increase in the coming year if we're going to offset the loss of the stormwater management fee, declines in the personal property tax revenue that we've seen, support a cost of living adjustment for our employees, and prepare for the December 2013 triennial reassessment that's coming up, as well as for any initiatives that mayor and council would like to have prioritized in the coming years.
And Michelle, I could just jump in there, just to clarify. Councilmember Metzner had talked about the 400 and the 400 earlier. What we've got in the budget figures for next year is we've got $400,000 in the city's general fund to pay the county for the combined emergency operations center, which has been in place now for several years. So if the county follows suit on what they did in April, May, by approving $400,000 a year in support, what they would do is waive that requirement that we pay the county for that $400,000. So that's in the budget.
But the money to pay, it's in the budget.
The money to pay the county is in the budget, so...
And that's the way we get money from the county, if they waive that. At least that was the way they had arranged it.
But what we don't have in the budget is the $400,000 city funding to match. That goes back to the Sora project and future discussions of mayor and council priorities. We don't have that $400,000 in the budget for next year. So just a clarification on that point. Once again, the county made that adjustment on the assumption, and maybe they'll change that, but that we would match the $400,000 with city funding. And we don't have that in the budget at this point because of uncertainty over the scheduling and timing of the projects and the ultimate determination of what the project is.
And the city's ability to afford that $400,000, or to fund that $400,000, was based on an analysis that determined over the next 10 years, the assessable base would increase to a point that the average would be $400,000 a year. So to pay for that $400,000 investment in the first five years where we would not have an increase in our assessable base, we would have needed to do a bond issue to raise that capital in the beginning, whereas we would recoup the money in the last six, seven, you know, in year six through 10 potentially. And that's kind of how that was funded.
You're referring to the Ripken Report and their analysis, yeah.
Oh.
Now, I'm on page five. Safe Speed for Students Program, revenues and expenditures. Fiscal year '13 budget had a revenue of $600,000, which was offset by direct operating expenditures of $353,000. Now that all of the cameras have been installed, we're projecting that fiscal year '13 actual revenue will be about $1.4 million, and actual expenditures for direct operating expenditure will be about $608,000. For fiscal year '14, the budget is estimated to be about $1.5 million for total revenues. Direct expenditures will be about $643,000. Just want to focus on some of the things that this program has enabled the city to do. First and foremost, these revenues can only be used for public safety expenditures. They can supplant general, existing general revenues that are being used to pay for public safety. As a result of the program, mayor and council have approved the hiring of one full-time police officer, the purchase of a vehicle for that police officer to actually operate the speed camera system. We've also approved hiring three fire captains, and we plan to fund the reinstatement of the cadet program for the police department. At this point in the fiscal year '13 budget, public safety totals $18.8 million in operating and one point, or about $1 million in capital projects. So any money that's not used for direct operations of the speed camera program are used to help offset that $19.8 million in existing public safety expenditures.
And just as a proportion, then roughly, probably a little bit more than half of the general fund is public safety.
Yeah. Prior years, it's about 46% of the general fund is public safety.
Okay.
What's the cost going to be of reinstating the cadet program?
We're still finalizing the numbers of that, and we will come back to mayor and council when we have, once we have the final numbers. I believe it'll be under $100,000, but at this point, we haven't finalized those numbers.
Thank you.
As far as the street infrastructure and neighborhood projects, staff want to echo mayor and council sentiments that we continue to support efforts to support our neighborhoods and maintain the qualities of our streets and bridges. To make sure that this happens, in fiscal year '13 and '14, we've had some of these projects occur. Just to focus on some of the more important ones in the neighborhood, Route 40 sidewalk installation, different parks have been created and landscaped within the city, Memorial Park, Green Walt Park. As far as streets and bridge projects, some of the bigger projects have been Burr Hands Bridge rehabilitation, Broad Fording Road reconstruction, and the pavement preservation program here in the city. Do you have any questions about those two pages within the general fund?
Which Burr Hands Bridge is that referring to?
Actually, there's, I think there's three.
There's three. Rodney, is he still here?
Rodney snuck out, but...
Okay, there's three of them, and actually, that specific project is, we get 80% grant money from the state, and our share is 20% of the cost.
Because it's a state road, pretty much?
No, because the state, because there's a federal-funded bridge program.
Oh, okay.
Federal Bridge Safety.
We have continuing, I have a continuing issue with the state ought to be paying more for Burr Hands and others. But it's not because it's Route 11, it's because of that federal bridge program.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay. We'll just turn to page six. This is a 25-year history of the property tax assessable base here in the city. You can see that, just going through the history, we've had some years where we've had slow growth from probably fiscal year '97 through 2004, had very marginal growth, with the lowest year being in 1998 with 1.1% growth. To offset those years where the assessable base was kind of slow to grow, you can see that the property tax real estate rate increased by 10.3 cents from .68 cents per $100 of assessed value in '97 to .783 cents in fiscal year '04. The chart also shows us how the December 2010 triennial reassessment affected the city. If you look in fiscal year '12, the assessable base changed a negative amount, negative 11.2% from fiscal year '11. That resulted in $2.7 million in lost property tax revenue. And you can see that in '13 and '14, we are expecting the real estate assessable base, or the property real estate, or the property assessable base to remain flat. Marginal increases of .8% and .2% primarily due to the homestead credit effectively smoothing residential properties. So people who had huge increases back when the years were booming, that were capped at 5%, maybe still saw a little bit of an increase in 2010 because they hadn't hit that 5% cap. Fiscal year '15, we are expecting to see, as I mentioned earlier, somewhere between a 5% and 8% decrease in our assessable base. We've projected a 7.3% decrease. That decrease in fiscal year '15 could translate to a $1.5 million loss in property tax revenues. And just to kind of give you some information, at the bottom of the page here, we show you that each penny on the real estate generates an additional revenue of about $250,000. Each penny on the personal property tax rate generates about $11,000 annually for additional property tax revenue. Do you have any questions about the chart?
You said a 7.3% decrease in the '15 would amount to how many, how many millions? $5 million?
About 1.5 million.
1.5 million, thanks.
And that's why we're encouraging to look at this budget for next year in the context of at least a two-year fiscal year situation, because we know the triennial's coming. And unless things improve dramatically in the next six months, based on what we saw a month ago on the rest of Washington County, it's likely to be a drop in that general neighborhood of the 7.3.
On page seven. We have compiled information from departments' operating requests, as well as capital requests. Prelimarily, these are the operating revenue estimates, as well as the operating expenditure requests from departments as of January 27, 2013. General fund budgeted revenues for fiscal year '14 are $36.9 million. It's a .4% increase over fiscal year '13's $36.7 million budget. It's very flat, $131,000 increase. What makes up that increase is listed down below. We did see a decrease in property tax revenue of $510,000. That's related to the loss in personal property tax that we had not expected. State and county shared revenues, we are expecting to see about $163,000 in increases. That's primarily due to our state aid for police protection, as well as modest increases in our income tax. Another big component would be fines and forfeitures, $726,000 for our Safe Speed for Students Program. Unallocated revenues, we had a one-time sale of our, of some stock in fiscal year '13, so we're seeing a decrease of $281,000 there. Do you have any questions about any of the revenue changes that we'll see in... Do you have any questions about any of the revenue changes that we'll see in fiscal year 14?
Again, these are still pretty preliminary for us. We need to continue to refine them.
We still have about eight weeks to work through these numbers.
So in the revenue side, you are removing the, the increase in highway user increase? That's not going to be shown in the state.
Highway user revenue is.
That'll be shown in capital.
Capital improvement project.
But it's been that way for a couple of years now. It hasn't been a general fund revenue.
And, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask the question, but the transfers from other funds, what does that $59,000 represent?
$59,000 is primarily made up of the $55,000 transfer from the health insurance fund for the health and wellness program. That was approved just a few weeks ago by mayor and council.
Okay. I know we have had discussions, and we clearly have, have a priority to demolish the MELP structure. And what I didn't see reflected in here was, and maybe it's simply because it's capital, but for demolition of MELP, where, where would that money be applied?
Demolition of MELP is included in our capital projects fund. We haven't really focused on that here. I will talk about it a little bit when I get to the debt section to let you know where, how we're funding some of that there.
Okay, I'll wait till then.
Okay.
What are service charges?
Service charges, charges for services would be.
Like planning and zoning fees, permits?
MELP permits are in, actually, they probably would be.
Trash and refuge collection fees are a big one for the general fund.
There aren't a lot of big ones in service charges.
I actually would have to go through my departments on the general fund.
That's the biggest one. Now, on the expenditure side, we are seeing a 3.4% increase in fiscal year 14. We're projecting $37.9 million. Fiscal year 13, we had a $36.7 million budget for operating expenditures. It's a $1.3 million increase. What makes up that increase is broken out and listed below here. We have $591,000 in wages and benefits. That increase, again, is made up of the increases in health and dental insurance that we had talked about earlier. 8.9% for health, 5.1% for dental. We also are projecting a 5% increase for workers' comp just based on history for the last few years. It also includes the three new fire captains as well as the one police, police officer for the Safe Speed for Students program. Materials and supplies, we're projecting that that'll decrease about $153,000, primarily due to decreases in utilities and other operating materials. Contracted services increasing about $385,000 as our revenue increases for Safe Speed for Students speed camera program. Our contracted expenditures will increase because we need to pay for the service, the collection services of those tickets. Debt service, we are expecting that to decrease by about $103,000. It has to do with the fact that in the last few years, we've been very diligent about paying off of our debt. We do have one issue being paid off in fiscal year 14. It's a 97 issue, general obligation issue. Transfers to other funds is decreasing by about $155,000. We've had to reduce about $100,000 being transferred to the Economic Redevelopment Fund, $145,000 to the Capital Improvement Projects Fund, and we've increased transfers out to the grant fund by about $65,000, and that makes up that number. And then, as we had mentioned earlier, we are including an $800,000 contingency for the possible COLA for employees, restoration of unfunded positions, and any other potential contract negotiation items that may come up. Based on the numbers that we have preliminarily in the budget, with a $36.9 million revenue and $37.9 million in expenditures, we do have a deficit of $1.1 million for fiscal year 14 that we do need to try to figure out how to fund at this point. Can be funded either through property tax rate increase, which would be the most likely way of funding it, and that's why we've discussed the need to have property tax rate increase in this fiscal year.
Just to clarify, no, no new positions in these numbers other than the three in fire and the one in police previously approved by mayor and council. And then, these numbers reflect about $1.7 million in cuts.
That we've already done.
That we've made off of submissions from, from departments trying to get the numbers down to this level. But still a work in progress. We've got to go back to departments and talk over those adjustments. We've got more work to do here. And the other thing I'd just like to mention on the Safe Speed for Students program is that that went into effect in April of 2012, so we don't have a full year of experience there and, and on a time basis. And in terms of the cameras, many of the cameras got installed even into the fall. So we're still gaining experience there. People are adjusting too as the program evolves. So we're going to need more time to get a, I guess, a more confident handle on how that program performs from a financial standpoint.
Do you have any questions at this point regarding either revenues or expenditures for the general fund?
I'm sorry, I want to go back to one, vehicles. How many vehicles are we talking about?
The size of our fleet, or?
How many have we deferred?
You, how many are you adding back, or how many have you deferred?
Most of the vehicles are included in our capital projects fund. They're not included in the operating, so they would not be included in these numbers.
How many?
They're included in our capital projects fund, not in the general fund, so they would not be included in these numbers.
Oh, wait a minute, there was something that.
I think you're looking at the top of page four.
I, yeah, I am, actually, or should be.
Hey Jade has.
That's correct.
Vehicle and equipment purchases.
Equipment purchases.
I don't have that information with me right now, but I can get that for you.
Okay, and with regard to those vehicles, what's the, what's the average mileage on those vehicles?
Okay, I'll have to get that information for you.
And I think it ranges from department to department.
I mean, there's, in the, in those vehicle deferments, it's, it's Public Works. One of the major items that we had kept in for vehicles was in the fiscal year 13 budget was for engine one replacement, and then in fiscal year 14, new ladder truck. But we are needing to replace dump trucks within Public Works. I think we did get one or two this, one this year. But also on the utility side, and water and wastewater especially, we've been deferring vehicles. And again, the mileage on them ranges depending on how far they're driving them, but the age of them is well past their useful lives.
Okay, thank you.
And of course, patrol cars would be the, probably the highest mileage. And we've been replacing, what was the schedule this year? Was it five we purchased?
Right, we replaced five this year.
Six.
And we're looking to do six, yes, every year going forwards.
But a lot of those we passed down through the department. At one point, the chief was driving, I think it was a 1998 vehicle, which many chiefs require a brand-new vehicle, so.
You mean that drug Mustang he was driving?
Maybe that too, yeah. I think though, it's a, it's a good issue for us because, and we talked about it last year, a little bit more maybe than this year. Our fear is, you know, you can't defer vehicle purchases too long or too many years before it starts to bite you. I think our departments and operations have done a nice job of pushing them back. But we're starting to slow down again just because of the tightness of the budget. So there'll be some additional deferrals into the future. We're trying to get these fire equipment vehicles in. They don't come cheap. Ladder truck for next year, over a million dollars. The following year, a second ladder truck at around, well, $9950 or something in that range for the two ladder trucks. And of course, a fire engine isn't cheap that we have in the current year. So those, those do impact our bond issues and our annual debt service costs and something for us to consider because they're major investments in our public safety operations.
Additionally, just the regular vehicles that they drive, the pickups, the cars. In order to fund that in the Capital Improvements Project Fund, we would actually have to be able and in a position to transfer more money out, more expenses from the general fund in that transfers to other funds category. And you can see from one budget season to the next, we're actually decreasing that. It was one of the things we looked at.
145 of that was the CIP fund, and that's reductions in the vehicles there.
We do have to keep an eye on the dump trucks because we rely on so many of those for snow operations. We need to make sure we've got a dependable fleet for our drivers in winter as well as year-round operations, but pretty critical in snow operations. So, once again, I think part of the next two months I'm working on that, in terms of that, that whole issue.
If there are no more questions, we'll turn to page eight and then take a look at debt. Our most recent issue was in fiscal year 2011. We issued $5.98 million in general obligation debt. It's used primarily to fund water and wastewater fund projects, or actually, only to fund those projects. We did receive an interest rate of 2.89% over the 20-year period. For fiscal year 13,
we've left in approximately 4.2 million to do a, an issue to bring in in the spring to have finalized by June 2013.
Right. We had started that process last summer. However, it was tabled by mayor and council because of the uncertainties over the music project. We also included in this issue $250,000 for the MELP demolition. We already have $500,000 reserved in our CIP fund balance for MELP demolition, so we have $750,000 reserved at this point. The additional funding would probably need to either come from the state grant that has been talked about recently, or from increases to our bond issue to cover $1 million for MELP demolition. Other things that are included in the $1 million of general fund issue for this $4.2 million issue coming up are the purchase of the engine one fire truck that we talked about earlier, just the city's portion of that, and any vehicle purchases that have been deferred over the last several years, as well as market house roof replacement. For fiscal year 14, we are expecting an additional $4.2 million bond issue. That would probably be done towards the end of the calendar year and early into next calendar year. General fund's portion of that bond issue would be $1.1 million. Water fund at 2.4, and the wastewater at just under $1 million. The last thing that we wanted to point out, well, one of the last things we wanted to point out is the fiscal cliff discussions that have been ongoing at this point. It's possible that those could impact our bond market interest rates. It's possible that our interest rates could increase. We've factored that into our debt schedules and increased our bond, anticipated bond interest rates from 3% to 4.25%. The other thing that the fiscal cliff could impact would be our Build America bonds from our 2009 issuance. We currently receive 35% of our interest expense reimbursed from the federal government regarding, relating to our Build America bonds. It's possible that that reimbursement could go away completely. General fund impact would be an additional $207,000 in, I'm sorry, citywide impact would be an additional $207,000 in interest expense.
All to the general fund?
No, that's citywide. Do you have the breakout for fund?
That is an additional $98,000 to the general fund, $62,000 for the water, $46,000 for wastewater, and like $1,700 for parking fund. Those were the four areas that projects were done with that stimulus, Build America.
Is there a specific proposal to remove that? Is that an impact of the sequester process?
I think it's, it's tied up with the sequester and the whole fiscal cliff. But from what I understand, and we did reach back out to our bond and finance council on that, is that at any point in time, from now until when that is paid off in full, that could be an item up for discussion as part of federal cuts. And other municipalities are faced with the same thing, only some of them did larger issuances and have a lot higher interest rates that they're trying to factor back into their budgets across the country, not just in Maryland.
Real quick, we think the 2.89% that we received in our last bond issue was probably the lowest interest rate, at least any of us could track down that the cities ever received on a bond issue. It was based on the AA ratings, so good, good ratings, but just in that particular point, rates are very, very low. And so we were pleased with that rate. Well, we would have to see what we get here this spring if we move forward with the bond issue.
And depending on timing and the federal cuts, if they decide that they wish to remove tax-exempt interest for investors to actually purchase our bonds, it will have an impact on our interest rate. So we did, in our 2013 and 2014 bond issue, we used a slightly higher interest rate, just.
To be conservative.
To be conservative.
Could you explain the chart at the bottom, please?
Yes, that's my, my next area.
Before you get there.
Sure.
The 250K that you talked about from MELP.
Yes, bond issue.
That's part of a bond issuance, and then the 500K that I'm assuming is part of a previous bond issuance.
No, it's in our CIP contingency fund.
CIP contingency.
Our fund balance.
And then 300 from the state, that covers your million. The, the 250 and the 500, I'm assuming that, that that, in terms of how it's paid back, I guess my question is, is that coming from, from the general fund?
Yes, it would come from the general fund.
It's not eligible for HDL expenditure for electric, right?
No, it's not. Mike, can you answer to that?
It's not eligible because. Even though the, the entity has some, some association with that post-closure process.
But it's only the 250 that would be included in the general fund bond issuance in that, at this point.
But the 500K that came from some type of CIP contingency had to come from somewhere.
CIP fund balance.
General fund transfers in typically.
That's what I'm saying, general fund is basically paying.
General fund transfers in for projects that maybe came in under budget and have just accumulated the balance in there.
To general fund expenditure.
Once again, somewhat similar to the downtown East End project if we move forward. There's no money right now in the CIP or in the bond issue for future redevelopment of the MELP site. But timing-wise, just based on what we're hearing from the owner and contractor, it probably wouldn't be this coming fiscal year that that would come into play. But just so you know, we haven't put any money in for any redevelopment or city expenditures for, to redevelop the site once it's handed back to the city following the demolition and the cleanup.
But, but you're holding, but you're holding an abeyance. I'm assuming the, the check from the county for the $650,000 from the sale of the armory property.
Right.
Under property management fund, right.
Right, and we understand mayor and council wishing to use that for one-time expenditures, so that's, that's available to the mayor and councils, we've said, whether it's for MELP.
For a one-time.
For something else, for one, it's a one-time revenue, so wise to fund a one-time expenditure with it.
Now focusing on the chart at the bottom with our debt affordability ratios. This is not only what we in finance use, but what the rating agencies use to determine the city's ability to afford and repay future debt issuances. We've just included a couple of years of history here. We have fiscal year 11 and 12. Couple of things they look at, one would be our assessable base. You can see that from fiscal year 11 through fiscal year 16, we are projecting that our assessable base will decrease by $400 million. That affects the government's ability to pay for its debt. The other thing that they look at would be our outstanding debt and our population. Population is expected to remain flat at $40,000 annually. We've had minimal growth expected in the next few years. And then our outstanding debt, because the city has been pretty diligent, very diligent at paying off its debt, our outstanding debt balance has decreased. That also factors in any new issues that we are expecting in the coming years, as well as principal repayments. The city's debt as a percentage of our total assessable base, our policy requires that it be under 10%. As far as our policy goes, we're looking pretty good there. We're under 1% of our assessable base for debt. As far as our policy goes, we're looking pretty good there, we're under 1% of our assessable base for debt issuance for the general fund only. Our debt per capita, according to our policy, needs to be under 1,000. Debt per capita is under 500, so we're, we're doing very good in that area. General fund debt service as a percent of our general fund operating revenue, which is our ability to repay our principal and interest payments, we need to make sure that we have not only a good revenue stream, but an increasing revenue stream. And what we can see here is that as our revenue stream is decreasing, our ability to repay debt is, is decreasing. So our interest, or a percentage there has increased from 6.41% in fiscal year 11 to 7.16% in fiscal year 16, even though our governmental debt outstanding has decreased. It's kind of a reverse effect, it's, our policy requires that it be 10% or less. If it gets close to 20%, that's a warning sign to the rating agencies that we're not able to afford our debt. So, the fact that it's increasing as our outstanding debt is decreasing is, is a warning sign in my, in finances' opinion. Some recent issuances that we've paid off, as I mentioned earlier, in fiscal year 13, we did pay off our '97 issue. Fiscal year 14, we're expecting to pay off a '98 issue. As well as our ice rink debt that we had, it was a bank loan for the ice rink. Do I have any questions right now about any of the charts or anything relating to debt?
Well, I'd point out that those increases you're talking about are based on your projections of the issues and what the interest cost is and so on and so forth. That's how you generate your debt service.
Yes.
Right now, we're at a low at 5.68 is where we're at now, so.
Yes.
So you're projecting it's going to become
That, that factor would go up, but it's still well within reasonable limits, it's the trend lines that
Once again, because of the triennial.
It's well within the reasonable limit.
It's well within reasonable limits, it's just the trend lines are, are not good, and Moody's, Sainterpores do look at those.
And part of that's because our revenue base stays down. I mean, that's where the, that's the variable there that's affecting that, and it's not so much the debt issuance, it's the flat revenue base.
Yes.
The rating agencies like to see not only increases in, in tax rates, but they like to see diversification of our revenues, new revenues, different revenues, and the speed camera revenue that was implemented last year was, was something that they looked very positively on. So, not only increasing the tax rate, but diversifying our revenue sources is something that they look at as well.
And, and just to be clear on that chart, you, you said it, but the government, governmental outstanding debt doesn't include the utility funds.
No.
So this is just general fund-supported debt. The utility funds have debt levels or debt totals higher than these numbers, it's not the total city debt, just to clarify that point.
Yeah, and as far as total city debt, debt per capita, we're, we're not in compliance there, simply because we have a large base of water and wastewater customers who do not live inside the city limits, so we're not including them in our per capita. So Moody's also looks at, at that rating, or that function as well. But we are looking at revising our debt policy to try to compensate for the fact that we have a large base of customers who live in the county for water and wastewater. Okay. Page nine, for community development fund. For fiscal year 14, the Community Development Block Grant assumes that there will be a 10% reduction in our federal funding for entitlement. Fiscal year 11's entitlement was about $1 million, and the city has decreased by approximately 40% over the last few years. Due to volat, due to the volatility of the federal budget situation, the estimate entitlement amount for fiscal year 14 will likely fluctuate in the next, in the coming months. We, we should, at this point, we're not sure if it's going to increase or decrease, we would anticipate it would, or decrease slightly. For administration and staffing, administrative personnel costs associated with various activities are projected to be lower. When compared to the previous fiscal year, administrative costs are permitted to be funded up to a maximum of 20% based on your current year entitlement, and over the last couple of years, we have met that administrative cap. And it's anticipated that fiscal year 14 will stay within administrative cap as well as into future years. Public services, according to CDBG guidelines, public services are permitted to be funded at a maximum of 50, 15% of the current year entitlement, plus any program income received during that year. For fiscal year 14, public service requests received totaled about $250,000. However, based on anticipated cuts in federal funding, CDBG-supported public services are expected to only be funded at $105,000 for fiscal year 14. So, we've received $250,000 in requests, but we can only fund about $105,000 of that. In fiscal year 13, the budget for public services was $135,000. Other requests for services include, in addition to funding for public services, the city receives requests in fiscal year 14 for CD funding for an additional $412,000. Most of those requests are for housing rehabilitation, public facility construction and renovations, as well as other housing initiatives that the city has programs for. For public facilities and improvements, in fiscal year 14, public facilities are expected to include funding for handicap and accessible ramps, that's a program that we've had for a number of years. And it's established to create more walkable and accessible sidewalk systems within the city. In order to provide more green space and recreational facilities, funding has been provided in the current fiscal year for the development of some parks in the city. CDBG-funded projects are also being carried out in cooperation with the city parks and recreation, as well as engineering departments. On the housing portion, for fiscal year 14, housing expenditures will include funding for housing improvement activities, homeownership programs, as well as residential loan and grant programs. By carrying out these programs, CDBG should have a visible effect on neighborhoods and generate increased program income for future CD initiatives and activities. Do we have any questions right now about any of the CDBG-funded program elements?
I'll just say it's been a critical funding source for neighborhood projects, housing projects, and federal cuts are having a significant impact on us here.
Yes. If I have no questions, I think I'll turn it over to Michelle Hepper here, she's going to go over the utility funds as well as parking fund for you.
Okay, so next we'll do the electric fund. One of the important things we want to note is the net assets as of the end of our fiscal year 12, that was June 30. The electric fund had 19.5 million in net assets. As of right now, we're projecting and anticipating increases in our retained earnings for both fiscal year 13 and fiscal year 14. In addition, the electric fund ended fiscal year 12 with 3.85 million in cash. And with where we are currently with our projections for 13 and 14, we're projecting that the ending cash balances are going to remain pretty much the same. Operating income and expenses, from fiscal year 13 to the fiscal year 14 budget, the operating in, income, as well as the expenses, are expected to decrease slightly as a result of some changes in our primary customers, some closures, and also because of the rates. The electric fund, going forwards, will continue to monitor revenues due to the projected loss of 8% or 3.8 million total gross revenue that resulted from the relocation and the closure of two of our primary customers. The 3.8 million in gross revenue translates to an approximate 700,000 operational loss because 81% of the costs are fixed within the generation slash transmission component of electric charges. The revenue loss may force the Hagerstown Light Department to reevaluate the existing rate structure and request tariff revisions with the Maryland Public Service Commission. One of the other things ongoing within the electric department is the negotiations with Allegheny Energy Supply, Doing Businesses vs. Energy Solutions. We have accepted and approved a contract extension for a one-year period, so it will expire May 31 of 2014. And with this contract term, excuse me, I'm sorry, our price will go from current $64.85 per megawatt hour down to $54.57. This is a reduction of approximately 15%. Because of the reduction that we're getting in price, we will offset that with future savings to our customers, so our revenue will go down, but so will our expenses. Staff is currently in negotiations to secure additional one- and two-year extensions at rates lower than the recent price of 54.57. And if this is not able to be met, then the Hagerstown Light Department will begin the task of a request for proposal.
But some of that might be offset if you have to charge more for your fixed costs, is in the first paragraph. So while you have a better, negotiate a better agreement for purchase power, you, you may have to, the way I read the first paragraph, change your rate structure to compensate for the losses. The other frustrating thing about this is that it only applies within the 1957 boundary of Hagerstown.
I thought the old, I thought it's older than that.
57. That's 50, it's the 50s, right, 57?
I think it's 43.
It's 47. I was told 57, for years I was told.
I think there was a court decision.
I just read it was older, I wasn't told. I didn't actually know it was older.
But the point is that our service area isn't growing for, for electric. It is for water and wastewater as we expand, but we can only expand within our service area for city light.
Correct.
The, but the implication that, that the rate will remain fairly, rate will remain fairly constant for the fixed rate cost, that, I'm assuming that doesn't factor in the adjustment for those unfunded positions? Well, you, you have, you have that rate, and I think it gets to the question that Marty was kind of getting to, is, is because of that loss, you have the adjustment, you're going to see a slight increase for that fix, but then you're going to see a reduction in Okay, so where would the adjustment need to be made then for, for covering the cost for the reinstatement of some number of those positions? Is Okay, I guess my question is why?
Those, those nine positions is cumulative over the last 10 years. And that didn't occur just in the last three years, we had issues in regard to the general fund.
Because Mr. Spiker runs a tight ship.
We mentioned the staffing, nine positions currently unfunded. And that is unchanged at this point for fiscal year 13 and 14. Capital improvement projects, electric fund is anticipating that all their capital improvement projects will be funded entirely from electric fund net assets in fiscal year 14. Some of the biggest dollar projects include vehicle replacements, telemetry equipment, substation improvements, and building and site improvements. In fiscal year 13, the Hagerstown Light Department was approved for $71,000 through Empower Clean Energy Communities Grant Program. This will allow the Hagerstown Light Department to purchase and distribute energy conservation kits to qualified customers. And it's anticipated this will assist about 975 homes. This 14-piece kit will be capable of conserving approximately 2,178.99 kilowatt per hours, per year, per household. Or you can see the number, per year. Sorry. Is there any other questions for the electric fund? Next we'll move to water. Water fund net assets, at the end of fiscal year 12, the water fund had 81.5 million in net assets and a total cash balance of 9.3 million. Our preliminary estimates for fiscal year 13 project a similar ending cash balance total. At this time, with our fiscal year 13 projections, we just want to reiterate that we've included a bond issuance contribution of 1.9 million to keep that balance. Operating income and expenses, we talked about the five-year rate fee schedule. Basically, on average, this rate schedule increases the water rates 5% within the city and 6% outside the city annually. The projections for this are included for our fiscal year 14. Similar increases anticipated for future periods, fiscal years after that. There is a model used for benefit charge funds to cover growth-related capital projects and debt service from prior year growth-related projects, this applies to both water and wastewater. Benefit charges have dropped significantly due to, of course, the current economic slowdown. We are estimating in the water fund that our revenues will increase between our fiscal year 13 to fiscal year 14 budget as a result of the rate increase. We are also estimating, however, a slight increase in operating expenses between that same budget period of fiscal year 13 to 14. And this is a result of actual labor time that we're spending on capital projects. As our capital projects start to slow down, less is going to be allocated out to those and more staying within our operational expense. And also, the increases in the employee benefits that we discussed earlier, the health insurance, the workers' comp. It's important to note, in the utility side, these health insurance isn't just for active employees, it's also for the retirees.
So, if, if I read this correctly under net assets, 9.3 million, of which about three and a half million is restricted, which leaves you, if I'm reading this correct, $6 million of unrestricted cash on hand. But then the last sentence says that we're looking at borrowing 1.9 million? Is, is that right?
Correct.
I, I guess my curiosity is why we're borrowing 2 million with 6 million in the bank? And increasing rates, when at the end of the day, next year, our, our cash balance is, is going to be even more favorable?
A lot of the borrowings that we have in the water department are tied to MDE issues, and sometimes we have grant forgiveness, principal forgiveness tied to those. So, many times it does benefit the city to actually take advantage of those MDE loans, sometimes they're even 0% interest. So, it does benefit the city to take advantage of that, whereas we can continue to earn interest on our $6 million in cash.
We've also been using bond issuance to cover like, the replacement of the
So this 1.9 million is going to be at 0% or going to be less than what we're, what we're earning?
I'm not sure, right now, that's the main reason why we've continued to do bond issues, they're, they're primarily MDE issues and
This one, this one is not.
This one's not?
I just, yeah, I mean, if it's, you know, the four and a quarter percent that you were referring to earlier, or even the 2.89%, you know, I, I can't imagine you're, you're getting that on, on your cash sitting in the bank.
Not at this time.
We'd have to take a look at it to see what cash outflows they have during the fiscal year as well, related to their larger capital projects. And we can get back to you on that information.
I was going to say, that, it does get a little complicated, because we got to look at cash flow as well as
Right.
budgeted revenues and the debt service, so how about if we do come back with some more information on that? Mike and Neilia can help us on that.
And there's no intent to reinstate these positions?
The water division currently has four unfunded vacant positions and is of right now in both fiscal year 13 or fiscal year 14.
And how long have those positions been vacant? Okay, I, I, it just, you, you caught me a little on the, on the light side, because I'm sitting here looking at 31 unfunded positions, but if 10 of them are from eight years ago, I'd have to question the reason why, why we're sitting here listing 31 positions unfunded. It makes me think that, you know, it's only been two years and, and we need to do something to put them back in, but if we've been operating eight years without some position, you, you pretty much pretty much say that that position no longer exists. Right. I, I don't know about you guys, but that.
Good question. We can address that with our Human Resources Department, have them take a look at it.
Capital improvement projects for the Water Division, one of the big ones is the replacement of the residual residential meters. This has been ongoing, and we anticipate that we will be completed with replacing all of them by twenty sixteen. This project increases our system billing accuracy, assists in the reduction of unallocated water, and helps to reduce customer billing complaints associated with human error. As, currently, we have replaced over fifty-five thousand of them, or twenty-eight thousand. The RC Wilson Transmission Main Replacement and Electrical Grade Upgrade is a hundred percent complete. This was done, and the work was accomplished with minimal system disturbances. We did two internal transformers and motor control panel where we placed in addition to the installation of a hundred percent of our backup generation requirements. The next big project right now for the Water is the Wilson Plan Improvements Phase Four. The city has recently awarded engineering services to Hazen and Sawyer with an initial estimate of nine point six million for the treatment plant upgrades. This project helps ensure compliance with MDEs, Disinfectant Byproduct II Regulations and Safe Drinking Water Act Regulations. The request for proposals for the rest of this project, which include construction project and management service, are currently in the bid phase with awards expected to be completed in February twenty thirteen and construction to commence late in the spring with an approximate eighteen-month construction period. Any other questions on the Water Fund at this time? Wastewater, wastewater net assets as of June thirty, twenty twelve, fifty-three point two million in net assets, total cash of one point six million. None of that's restricted, it's just one point six million.
That's restricted, unrestricted, you said?
Correct.
Yeah. So one point six unrestricted in wastewater.
Our preliminary estimates for June thirty, twenty thirteen include a slight increase for cash balance, and that again is, at this time, we've included a twenty thirteen bond issuance contribution of one point one million dollars. The largest part of that is for a back truck. Operating income and expenses, again, we have a five-year schedule, five percent for inside customers, three and a half percent for outside city customers. So our projections and our budget for fiscal year fourteen reflect this increase. Future rate increases will be needed beyond this level for the next rate schedule. Again, benefit charges here, benefit charges for capital projects have dropped significantly just with the downturn in the economy. One of the highlights for the wastewater department is the wastewater treatment plan is operated fifty-seven consecutive months without a discharge monitoring report violation. The wastewater treatment plant continues to operate within all operational guidelines set forth by MDE.
And that's, that's really significant because we went through a stretch where we struggled with environmental compliance. And once again, to the compliments of the staff and, and the support of the Mayor and Council on funding upgrades, we've, we've really got that plant repositioned.
As a member of a prior administration that sat here with twenty-six violations in an eighteen-month period, we appreciate those numbers, at least I do.
Our preliminary estimates for operating revenue are an increase from the fiscal year thirteen to the fiscal year fourteen budget. Again, that's due to the rate structure. Likewise, we anticipate increases in the operating expenses from fiscal year thirteen to fiscal year fourteen. And those increases on the wastewater side are primarily because of the increased charges in our pellet, pelletizing charges and again, increases in the employee benefits. There is only one unfunded position within the wastewater department at this time. Capital improvement projects, Work on the Citywide Inflow and Infiltration Project is ninety-nine percent complete. This was a big project with multiple funding sources. We utilized approximately one point four million in stimulus grant funding, which was awarded through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. We also utilized a second grant, which was eight hundred thousand dollars from the Bay Restoration Grant awarded by MDE. And last, we had eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar loan, zero percent loan through Staff continues to refine processes as they relate to E and R, that was the other big project. At the wastewater treatment plant includes additional flow channel and upgrade to the headworks process, filter process, which allows, which allows us to reach the E and R mandates and ultraviolet disinfection process. Staff worked with MDE in securing the funding for the algae issue. There was algae in our final clarifiers, and as it moved through E and R filters, it became an operational challenge that was rectified by installing covers in two of those clarifiers.
Anything for wastewater?
Do you have any questions for wastewater?
Last but not least on our agenda is Parking Fund. Net assets in the Parking Fund at June thirty, twenty twelve, there's five point eight million in net assets with a total cash balance of a hundred and fifty-four thousand. Preliminary for fiscal year thirteen, cash balance is looking approximately the same, and we have included a hundred thousand dollars bond issue to do some repair work at our deck in that cash projection. Within the Parking Fund, the meter rates, meter rates were increased on July one, twenty-eleven, and they were increased from twenty-five cents an hour to fifty cents to hour to help offset some losses from customers that left the area. As part of our downtown parking plant, we were authorized to develop a downtown parking plan. The project had a budget of thirty-five thousand, this was completed previously in May of twenty-twelve, and the primary focus of this parking system, demand and supply, and the results emphasized there's no immediate need for a third parking deck unless major employers and/or attractions are located in the downtown area. One of their other recommendations that they offered was to increase street meter rates again in an effort to kind of free up some street parking and get people to move into the parking decks. We did not include any, any increases in thirteen or fourteen at this time. The North Potomac Deck, future capital improvement projects include replacement of the joints between the deck sections and numerous concrete repairs. Fiscal year thirteen budget of a hundred thousand dollars, that was our bond issue request, and then thereafter, an additional thirty thousand each subsequent years. The North Potomac Debt Service was paid off at the end of fiscal year twelve. Parking enforcement is part of, the parking system is of July twenty-eleven. The parking enforcement officers utilize wireless handheld systems that enter data in real time, and this has saved us approximately seven to ten thousand per year by eliminating the need for an office staff member to manually enter that data into our financial system. One of the last things we just want to mention here is the Parking Deck Fund itself. Each parking deck, within each parking deck, the fees do not cover the operating and debt services associated. We are helping to offset that with the revenues from the street and meter lots in order to support the operations of the decks to keep the Parking Fund whole.
Any questions right now?
I, I don't know if it's a question, but under the downtown parking plan, there is a statement in that paragraph that says there is no immediate need for a third parking deck unless major employers and/or attractions are located in downtown. And, you know, I remember this, this discussion when, when we struggled to move forward on the A and E parking deck, and, and it, it, it is the literal chicken and the egg issue, and it, you know, I was a little disheartened when I read the one editorial a few weeks back about, you know, please don't tell me a plan for downtown is another parking deck because I'm a firm believer in them. You drive to your successful cities like Frederick and Salisbury and Cumberland, Annapolis is a good example, and people park in parking decks, that's where they park. This idea that you continue to tear structures down and build surface, surface parking lots to try and fill buildings that, that, you know, or in that vicinity, to me, just, just doesn't seem the best way to go about things. I think you, you put cars in parking decks and, and you have more buildings downtown occupied. So you have to make that investment. If I had my, my way at the end of the day, we'd be talking about a parking deck on, on the Columbia Bank Lot this year, and, and we'd be talking about it for the reason of putting the Board of Ed downtown. I think that those conversations have to happen because I think the parking decks are important for downtown reinvestment. I would struggle to find a, another successful or successful downtown where you take the largest piece of real estate property you, you have in, in the heart of your core, and, and what you do is you place, you know, two or three hundred space, parking lot on it, and, and, you know, and, and find some successful development, you know, around that, that surface area. I just don't see it, and hopefully, you know, we can change that discussion, you know, and, and find a mechanism to change that, because I think if we don't invest in that infrastructure, that development is simply not going to happen, and, and that's just, that's just the way it's going to be.
But the word is link. It needs to be linked to specific projects and specific proposals. The consultants recommend it against speculative, especially in our things where our existing decks are underused, building a deck on spec without any commitments for other projects. Yes, if you can link it to other projects, the stadium would have been one, the, the board could be one, but I would hope some private investors. But if you build it on spec without contributions, Aunt Suzie's paying for all those parking spaces, that's just the way it comes out.
You know, we, we didn't have a huge, we didn't have a huge level of confidence from the private business community, frankly, when, when we did the A and E deck, in terms of the expectation for what the unit block of South Potomac would become, and for the expectation of the library, you know, increasing in size of the school field arts. We didn't have an expectation for those things occurring, but we invested in that infrastructure, and it clearly has benefited those things coming and expanding and investing in those buildings, and, and I think that, that.
But those were linked, they were linked at the time. Bowman was investing.
Yeah, one, one single.
Yeah, and it was, that parking garage was supposed to be Bowman's baby too.
Really, that, that's it, one single small business item was linked to, to, to that larger city investment, and clearly, private investment, you know, and public-private partnerships have, have taken off from that, and you hear all the time, you know, it could have been bigger and, and, you know, greater utilization, so.
Well, and, and I think the points well taken that if we could shift from surface lots to decks, that would be the better approach for city planning purposes.
I think that, I think that goes hand in hand.
So, so the, the struggle we'll need to get over is that the, the study by Rich and Associates showed about half of the public spaces being used downtown at peak hours on weekdays. So what they would say is we have an abundance of available parking. That includes the lots. So if we want to look at a new strategy where we eliminate surface lots and replace them with a parking deck, that, that may be feasible with, with current usage levels. It would certainly give us more peace of mind if, if it was linked to development, because right now, we're subsidizing the decks as, as Finance has said.
You're going to run out of that subsid, you'll, you'll be paying for that deck out of general funds, that's.
Well, and that's, it's new capital expense for us. Right, it's new capital expense for us, so it's, it's not a even trade, surface lots for a new parking deck.
Well, I think, I think both of you all make a very good point. I also believe that the Board of Education wouldn't consider coming downtown unless we absolutely assure them that there's going to be a new parking deck. I don't think they have the confidence at this point to, to come downtown because they, they are not sure of that assurance.
Which will benefit other ancillary private investment and development around.
It will, yes. Summit Avenue would benefit greatly from what you're suggesting.
Any other questions or comments? I'm going to thank the staff, I know you've been working diligently in the last few weeks to put together this presentation, and you continue to work on crunching the numbers, and I appreciate your efforts, so.
Thank you.
Look forward to the future conversations. All right, we're, we're at that point where we're going to have city administrators' comments.
Well, I, I would just like to echo what the mayor said in terms of thanking Finance, they've worked hard on this. Need to thank the, the departments because, as you've seen, they're making adjustments in operations with efficiencies in operations, scaled back costs, and, and thank AFSMI and our other three unions because certainly, the unions have worked with us well over the past few years to adjust operations and lower costs. So it's been a good team effort by the staff, good guidance from Mayor and Council. Realize that we threw a lot at this Mayor and Council two months into your, your terms, so we definitely appreciate your scheduling this session and, and letting us present this information this, this afternoon and evening. That's it for me.
All right. I'll start to my right with council comments, Ms. Nye.
When they brought up about the money from the cameras, okay, tickets, can somebody get ahold of a ticket that shows specific where the tickets are to be paid? There are people that are coming into City Hall and then are being quite agitated because they feel that it is the city is where they should be paying it, and I have no idea what a ticket looks like, so I can't say that. But, you know, there's, there's been a number of people that have been very upset in the fact of thinking they pay it. Yeah, they pay it at City Hall, and that's not the case. I guess we are paying it to the contractor? Is that who it goes to? And I don't know, like I said, I've not seen one, so I can't say, because evidently, the city of Hagerstown is on it, and that's what's linking the people to come into the city to try to pay.
Maybe there's some need for clarification on, on the ticket.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. If you could just check into that.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Brubaker?
Well, we did get a ticket, Penny, and my wife and I still argue about who was driving. But, but I did see things on that, this was a good while ago now when it was first starting, and there were things on the forum, I think staff did move to change some things around that were confusing, you know, from, even as informed as I am, I was looking at it and saying, gee, somebody looking at this, and I can't remember the details, but they did respond, so I hope they respond. I think that's a legitimate point that you have.
Yeah, because what you said, you know, when they walked in, because my husband was here and, you know, was an older gentleman, and he was really confused, so.
Yep. But I want to also commend the staff for their thorough, professional presentation. I think using conservative numbers is the way to go. It's always better to accumulate too much because you used a conservative number than not have enough because you didn't, you went the other way, and I think that's helped get us through the past four years of fiscal agony. At the same time, I, because the, the staff mentioned tax increases, doesn't mean that this council is, is accepting those, that's a staff, that's a possibility that's been thrown out there, but it is not something that the council has accepted. I would like to find a way, I think the employees have gone too many years without any compensation, and like to find a way to include a suitable number in the budget for that, but I also would like to whittle away and try to find a way to, to not increase our taxes, because yes, I know people's assessments go down, so they're paying less, but the economy's down, so people need to pay less. The second thing is, you know, we're still up there, I haven't seen the, the two thousand thirteen numbers, but we're one of the highest tax rate municipalities in the state, especially among the major municipalities, and I, I, I just continue to find it difficult imagining going higher. So I, I hope we can work to find a way in the next couple of months to, to make it work without a tax increase.
Thanks, Mr. Asher.
Two things, first is thanks to staff, the information was, was, was more than enough. I appreciate the presentation, I especially appreciated the way that the, the water in the sewer and, and those sheets were laid out to, to kind of summarize and, and give me an idea of, of sort of the nuts and bolts of where they stand, because I think it's important to focus as, as heavily on your enterprise funds as it is your general fund and the stability of those operations. The second is, you know, we, we talk a lot at each meeting about downtown. The second is, you know, we talk a lot at each meeting about downtown and the urban core, et cetera, and I have to keep reminding myself and reminding folks that we need to be very aware that this city is much larger than its downtown, that the backs of exactly the things we talked about here this evening rest heavily on a significant number of our traditional neighborhoods of, you know, property owners that see, you know, and experience firsthand the changes in their neighborhoods, one of which it was covered in the recent MML magazine, which is strategies to deal with vacant and foreclosed properties. I continue to believe that we need to have some discussion on how we address those things, some strategy on how we turn that dynamic around now that we've sort of floated past, you know, the foreclosure bubble of '08 and '09, and reinforce, you know, stability within these neighborhoods that give them the aesthetic appeal that, you know, that they had for folks that were, you know, building three and four hundred homes before that. So, that's a priority for me and something I'd like us to have a conversation about at some point.
And if I could on that real quick, we've had some pretty full work session agendas for you, but we tried in January, it didn't fit in. In February, we hope to have code enforcement in so Mayor and Council can talk about some of your priorities, because several of you have mentioned you've got some thoughts there, and we'd like to have that general discussion with Mayor and Council in reference to code enforcement, and that would, I think...
So, be it built, or in the General Assembly discussed tomorrow, if the legislative committee covers that.
So, we'll try to get that on for, in February.
I would also like to thank our fiscal staff. This was obviously a lot of work, a lot of thought, and just to tell you though, nobody's going to accuse you of being Santa Claus. Also, also, I would also like to thank our staff that did such a great job of snow removal during the last couple of snows. They probably came at the most inconvenient times, but you all did a great job, and a much better job than the surrounding areas, I might add, and I've heard a lot of good comments about it. Thank you.
My only comments are to, you know, also reiterate the thanks to the staff. I do think that this discussion highlights the need to increase revenue without increasing taxes, and I think, I don't, I think Marty might have said it, but nobody has an appetite to increase taxes as we continue to experience an economic, not a downturn, but, you know, as we try to recover. So, I think the discussions in the next couple of months will be very important. I do think that it's important that we recognize our staff and we try to get them a cost of living adjustment, and that we make sure that we take care of them because they do all the good work that we tell them to do. I am looking forward to going down to Annapolis tomorrow for the Washington County Day, and look forward to meeting all the members of the delegation and members of the state administration. So, looking forward to representing Hagerstown, and if there are no other comments, questions, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.